And they watch me drinking on TV.
It's seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the call.
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Trempele County Board of Supervisors will meet at 7:00 PM on May 17th. That's Norwegian Independence Day, by the way. 2021, in the county board room. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on May 7th, 2021, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Severson, County Clerk.
Roll call.
Rick Nimitz. Douglas Winters.
Here.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Okay. Richard Sashia.
Yes.
Joe Feltes. George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Here.
Randy Tolfson.
Here.
Michelle Haynes. She said she was going to be virtual, so she might be coming on. John Austin.
Here.
Chuck Wallach.
Present.
Tim Zeglin.
Present.
Dan Schreiner.
Here.
Kellen Nelson.
Here.
Jeanie Nutter.
Here.
Kurt Skoyan.
Here.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Fifteen to two at this time.
Michelle, here.
There we are. I knew you were sixteen to one. Gotcha.
Okay, certified. The open meeting law requirements have been met with proper posting and notification. We have amended agenda. The items that are amended are Item C on, uh, under 5C, and also added F and G.
No, 5C was always on there.
Oh, Item F?
Oh, the new 5C.
Yeah, there's a new 5C.
I got the wrong one.
Yeah. Anyway, it's a new 5C. The presentation from Integrity Group. I didn't know about that either. Is she here or?
She's virtual.
Oh, okay. And then.
Well, if this is the one.
And then. And then. Item F and G under seven are new. Other than that. So somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Chuck Wallach, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes. Had the minutes in your possession for a while? I'm sorry about that. But we got the aye anyway.
Motion to approve the minutes is printed.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Motion by Brandt, seconded by Nutter. All those in favor signify by saying. Okay, for both sets of minutes. Is that okay with you, Jeanie?
Yes.
That's totally fine.
Okay, this is for both sets of minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No opposed either. No opposed either. Thank you. Uh, Parents S. Human Services Annual Report. Think you got copies on your desk? We have Devin.
Erica.
And Erica here, explaining the report.
Uh, thank you for allowing us this evening to present our 2020 Annual Report. Uh, I have with me Erica Anderson, who you. Most of you know is our Behavioral Health Services Supervisor. Um, as of today officially, she does that job part-time, and she's also part-time Deputy Director. So we're very excited that she's, um, part of our leadership. Part of the reason we need a Deputy Director is since 2013, we've grown our revenues by over ninety percent and our staff by nearly sixty percent. Our department has grown in leaps and bounds, and you maybe don't notice those kind of big increases when we do these annual reports each year because it's kind of incremental. Uh, but we have been doing a lot of good work, um, for a lot of people in the community, and that's what we want to tell you about this evening. So the, um, annual report in front of you, you can peruse through it. We're not going to read it to you. I'm sure for bedtime reading, you can know it's, it's slightly more interesting than that. This is very interesting, and I think everyone should read it. I'm serious. Um, so up on the, uh, chart, we have our, our mission and vision. We always have that. Um, I would like to talk to you, though, a little bit about 2020, how 2020 was for Human Services. Um, I remember, uh, it obviously was a crazy year, like for everybody else. Um, I remember about a dozen or so years ago, the county I was working at started doing some, um, disaster planning, and they started working on pandemic planning. And I remember sitting there thinking, how? Because I was a supervisor at the time and inside the Human Services Department, and I'm like, how could you plan for a pandemic? Like, you don't know who's going to be sick. You don't know how infectious it is. You don't know the vulnerable people you have to serve. You don't know how you're going to serve them. Like, how could you even possibly plan for that? But we did have a good conversation about, you know, sometimes people have to do things they don't normally do. You have to change how you do work, where you do work. And I remember we had a good conversation about it, and I'm so grateful for that, uh, conversation that I started out very confused because it really helped set, um, the groundwork for how we, uh, proceeded, uh, once we were all caught off guard with a, I mean, a pandemic. Like, epidemic sounded like a crazy thing to plan for, but a pandemic? Um, so, um, I'm very proud, and we'll get into the details more, but in 2020, we continued to serve the public seamlessly. The, the community that really counted on us and needed us, when you couldn't go see your family, when you couldn't see your friends, when you couldn't go to community events, you couldn't even go to church or to the store, we were there for the public. Uh, we continue to answer our phones. Sometimes the phones were answered, uh, by staff when they were working in their own home, but the public would never know the difference. Uh, we had, we continued to do our, our home visits with all of our families as we needed to. Sometimes we got very creative on doing that using technology. Uh, but some of our visits had to be done in person just to see, um, the individuals, make sure they're okay. Our child abuse and investigation still needed to happen in person. We did those using, um, masks, social distancing, tried to do things outside, but sometimes they, you had to, uh, still do other things. Um, our transportation programs continued. Instead of giving people rides to the grocery store, we picked up the groceries for it and took to them, uh, took it to them for the seniors. Uh, we continued to deliver a number of, um, volunteer driver, uh, rides to individuals that needed medical appointments. We continued to do that. It was a little bit down. We'll talk more about it, but we continued to do that. Um, uh, home-delivered meals, never missed a beat. For those of who were counting on our home-delivered meals, they continued to get them. Our staff obviously used all kinds of practices to keep themselves and the people we serve safe. Um, mental health services, we continued to deliver them, and quite frankly, um, you'll hear from Erica, that people we never heard of before came to, came to us. The anxiety, the depression, the stress of the pandemic, of the isolation, of the quarantines, really was very, very difficult on many people in our community, but we were there for them. Um, our nurse that provides injections to people with chronic and persistent mental health disorders, um, she needs to go to their homes at least once a week. Somebody's calling in. That's weird. Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Was it Olivia calling you?
No.
Oh, she's not.
Um, so we continued to provide those injections. You can't do that six feet away. We had to continue to provide those medications to individuals so that they could remain calm and in their homes and not become hospitalized. And we continued to do drug testing, and again, that's not a, a thing that you can do six feet away to, uh, collect the urinalysis test. For a while, we did some hair follicle testing, just because it was, um, less personal and less invasive. But the problem with hair follicle testing, it's all about three months ago, and it's kind of hard to do, uh, the accountability and the sanctions and the rewards that delayed. It just doesn't have the same effect. But we continued to do things as best we could. I do want to say, we couldn't have done any of that without, thanks to, um, several large groups. First of all, huge thank you to the Health Department. Without their help, I don't know how we'd have got through 2020 in, in our department. Um, the guidance that they provided, the direction they provided on what's, um, safe and healthy, they were very generous, uh, early on with the PPE. Later on, Jeremy was the one who had a big supply of it for us. Um, Health Department provided a ton of information so we could gauge if we do more home visits or fewer home visits. Um, they just, they did a great job. Um, second of all, we want to say a huge thank you to the IT Department. The heavy lift that they did in 2020 might be invisible to all of you, but it was tremendous, at least for our staff. We had been planning to move towards a remote work model for some of our staff, so all of our staff prior to the pandemic had laptops, thanks to a lot of work done by the IT Department. Um, but we, they worked very hard to get additional monitors for our staff that did a lot of paperwork, so they could have that remotely, uh, working with staff when they were having difficulties connecting, helping us figure out devices so that parents could do supervised visits with their kids that are in out-of-home care without seeing the kids, um, through telephones, iPads, things like that. Tremendous amount of work. Many thanks to Jeremy and his staff, um, provided us all the wipes that we need, not just for our office, but for our cars because we transport a lot of kids and a lot of individuals. Um, he, uh, then became the guardian of the PPE and the masks for us. Um, again, continued to, uh, sanitize all the rooms after meetings. And, uh, whenever we had a staff person who might have been in contact, uh, with a COVID, or with a COVID-positive person, he and his staff were on the spot in that person's office sanitizing the office so it didn't spread around. So huge thank you to them. And my fourth huge thank you is to all of you. Um, I did not agree with you a year ago about not closing the doors. I was kind of like, come on, close the doors. Everybody else is. But you did the right thing by not closing the doors, and I know that the former county board chair and the current county board chair took a lot of heat for those decisions. Um, but I'm really glad that you did because you continued to be, make us all available to serve the people that needed us. You showed the community that what we do is very important, not just in Human Services, but in the county, and you made us be available to do that. So I just want to say a huge thank you for that. So I'm going to turn over, we're going to talk a little bit about some of our specific services. I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy Director and Behavioral Health Services Supervisor, Erica Anderson, to talk about her unit.
Thank you. And just to tag on that quick, I, I know Deb just said it, but I agree. Um, I was thinking the same thing, like, you know, a little over a year ago, like, why aren't we closing the building? Um, what's wrong with everyone? But I am so proud to work for this county this year because of the things that we did in 2020, and I'm really proud of our staff, and I do thank you for doing that. I didn't agree with it, but, uh, you were right and I was wrong, I think. Um, so I feel like it set an example, and I still feel like we're an example across the state of Wisconsin, um, just in our county and the services we provide, and that we haven't missed a beat. Staff continue to serve people. Nobody's complained about continuing to serve people. They've just been great, creative thinkers and figuring it out. So, and doing so without spreading COVID. Um, we have not had any known exposures that have created exposures to other people or clients that we're working with or things like that. So staff have done a great job as well. So with all of that said, yes, 2020 was a little tough for behavioral health, um, because we provide a lot of services directly to people in the community. That's our goal, but of course, that means, um, very close contact and, um, not a lot of control over the environments that we're working in. Um, so first up, uh, Commu-, a Comprehensive Community Support Program, our CCS program. Um, I'm not going to read the numbers off to you. You can see those in your report. Uh, we held pretty stagnant in, um, 2020 in that program. We didn't, we had some new enrollments, um, as you can see, um, but our numbers held pretty, um, um, solid as to previous years, largely because our, uh, referrals went down because our referral sources are primarily schools and hospitals and clinics. And so, of course, there weren't a lot of people going into the clinic, per se, um, maybe hospitals. And then there weren't a lot of kids going to school. So we were down on referrals. Um, one of the things, though, just to tell you a little bit about CCS, it's my favorite program, so I like to talk about it. But, um, we, in 2020, our CCS program continues to grow. It's a fairly new program in Trempele County. Um, and what CCS does is it utilizes all MA dollars. So the cool thing is it's at really no cost, like, I think I can say that, um, to the county or, um, it's not local levy dollars that go into this program. So our staff do a lot of work because we have to hold a certification to operate that program, but then all of our costs are, um, we get a hundred percent for that. So that includes staff time and all the services. Now, in 2020, we delivered, I think, probably in excess of a million dollars in services to twenty-nine individuals in Trempele County struggling, um, with some pretty intense mental health and AODA needs. And the cool thing is it's done right in their homes in the. Huh?
AODA needs.
So, oh, think, I was like, what? What do you mean? What does AODA mean? A Meda, MA stands for Medicaid. Thank you. I'm really bad on the acronyms. Um, and so mental health and then substance abuse, um, needs. So that program serves, um, kids and adults. That's another cool thing about it. It serves people across the lifespan, um, kids and adults with mental health and/or substance use needs. And as you know, most of those go hand in hand. So, um, those services are provided, um, by our staff and then contracted providers. Um, many of those providers are, um, Trempele County, um, residents and/or businesses, so that's a cool thing. It's more money just going right back into the county and benefiting people in the county. So we do all sorts of things from providing counseling, which you can get that on an outpatient basis, but the awesome thing about CCS is the counseling comes right to the person. So if you know people that are struggling with substance use and/or mental health concerns, which are a lot of people, you know that transportation in a rural county like we live in is, is really difficult, and for most people, you have to drive at least forty-five minutes to see a provider. In CCS, the providers come to you. Um, and their travel time is paid for. So we get quality providers too, um, because they get paid, um, at a decent rate, um, which is, which they should. Um, and then we provide, like, skill development, so teaching people, you know, working on parenting skills with people, um, working on, um, just, you know, planning life, organizing life, all of those kinds of things, coping skills, learning to deal with the stressors, um, living in the community. So that's the really cool thing about CCS. Um, we try to work with people that are coming out of the hospital to people that are coming out of, um, substance use treatment, because as if you're familiar at all with substance use, you get the twenty-one or twenty-eight days inpatient, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But then when you get out, the hard work is applying that in your own home and in your community, and CCS has really helped us help people be successful in overcoming addiction. So that's CCS, my favorite program, um, because we have so much flexibility with it. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into it, though, too, because we have to be accountable for the money and where it's going. So that's a whole nother story. Our Community Support Program, CSP, um, we, um, had sixteen adults enrolled in that program, so that program serves adults living in the community with severe and persistent mental illness. So we have a nurse. Um, she goes out, continued to go out this whole time, assisting people, making sure they're getting their medications, making sure they're safe, making sure they're getting appointments and advocating for them as they need. Um, outpatient services, um, we saw that number go down just a little bit, primarily in the mental health realm, and a lot of that was due to outpatient clinics not, right, especially early in the pandemic, um, not seeing patients. Um, the providers got a lot better about virtual, um, and getting people going virtually, and now we're kind of back to almost every place, I think, in person. Um, the biggest increase we saw, thank you, sorry, I'm not paying attention to that, was in our crisis contacts. Um, they were up significantly from three eighty-seven in 2019 to five twenty-eight in 2020. We continue to contract with Northwest Connections. That's where we saw people that we'd never seen before, um, coming in, just really struggling with anxiety, depression. Residential treatment, um, we serve seven individuals. Those are people that actually go somewhere else to receive some sort of mental health treatment, um, so they're living somewhere other than at home. So people with pretty intense needs. Um, and then AODA residential treatment, um, thank you. That's another area, um, where we saw a lot of need last year. People struggling with addiction. Um, it's a struggle all the time, but last year was a really, really tough year, and a lot of people's contacts and support networks were interrupted by the pandemic. Um, I think inpatient services, uh, we saw a pretty significant increase in the amount of emergency detentions in our county, um, and furthermore, in the amount of emergency detentions that went to Winnebago all the way across the state. The issue is where there's already a hospital bed shortage, um, and then, um, most of the hospitals went down to single beds because they couldn't do shared rooms. And so, um, almost, I think, over forty percent of our, um, emergency detentions went to Winnebago, but that's a story, that's a problem, um, that we're addressing, but that's a story for another day. Um, birth to three, we had twenty-nine new enrollments, so we continue to serve kids in birth to three. Our birth to three team, so that's like our physical therapist, an occupational therapist, a speech therapist. Um, they got really creative. I was, they did a really great job, um, trying to meet the needs of families. They did a great job virtually. We figured out some things we could do virtually and save some money just moving forward. Um, they're also glad to be back and getting to see kids right in the home again, too, so. Um, and then children's long-term support. We did have ten new enrollments, and we continue to serve seventy-six children in that program as of the end of December. And, um, that program is for children with developmental, physical, and emotional needs. So, any questions on any of that? That's, yes.
Your, your inpatient service, you use Winnebago. I thought we have one in Trempele County.
We do. So the Trempele County Healthcare Center, yes, that is a good question because it confuses a lot of people, does not accept emergency detentions. So when someone is emergency detained in a crisis situation, the options are the psychiatric units at, we only have Gunderson as an option, Mayo in Eau Claire and Sacred Heart in Eau Claire, sometimes Norwood in Marshfield. They don't always have openings, and then Winnebago is the other institution. Yes. The Trempele County Healthcare Center is licensed as a nursing home, actually, and they operate under that license, and that does not allow them to accept emergency detentions.
Otherwise, we could certainly send people there, but that's not the licensing.
I got one in the house.
What was that?
I got one in the house.
Okay.
Um, so we're going to move into, um, our next unit, Economic Support. That is a ser-, program that, uh, helps people sign up for, uh, food share, Badger Care, um, uh, medical assistance, all those kinds of services. Um, typically, this, uh, graph that I show you just has the numbers for the year because they're usually pretty typical, similar from year to year, don't really change too much. But what you'll see is there have been some pretty dramatic increases between twenty twenty and twenty nineteen in, in terms of people needing additional services. Not a surprise when you, uh, people are being laid off and people are losing their jobs, um, things like that are going on. Uh, we also had, um, uh, the one of them that didn't increase was the nursing home MA, which, uh, actually went down, which isn't surprising because nursing homes were not taking additional people during COVID. It was, uh, they, again, keeping people safe. They had to make some very tough choices in how they operate, and so that one did not increase. But, uh, clearly, this slide indicates that, uh, the economy in Trempele County got hit pretty hard during COVID. Um, one of our other units, our Children and Family Services Unit, this is a graph, um, comparing twenty nineteen to twenty twenty in terms of number of referrals that we received. If you look at the green line, that is twenty twenty, and the black line is twenty nineteen. So we started out the year really strong compared to the previous year. Once COVID hit, when you see March, it just dropped, and, um, because schools were closed, doctors weren't, we, uh, weren't seeing kids, uh, grandparents weren't seeing kids, people weren't seeing kids. Our referrals dropped off dramatically, um, in, um, March, April, and May. They started to pick up a little bit, but it wasn't until November and December when we actually topped the twenty nineteen numbers. Um, so, um, there were a lot of kids. We were very concerned because we knew there were, we were just going on average, but based on the average, we knew how many kids we'd typically be serving, and they weren't coming to us, and we were concerned what's going on with those kids. Oh, dear. One of my graphs fell out. Well, sorry about that. Maybe I went past it. Well, look at that. Okay, well, anyway, our, uh, number of kids in out-of-home care stayed almost exactly this. It's dropped off at the beginning of the year, um, but then the kids that were in out-of-home care stayed almost exactly flat, um, right around the average, uh, and the graph is in your, um, in the booklet that we gave you. So we, we maintained around twenty-five kids, um, in out-of-home care throughout the year. Um, in juvenile justice, uh, this compares the number of referrals, uh, twenty twenty back to twenty fifteen. Um, we were seeing a regular increase until twenty twenty. That dropped off some. Um, but the big difference, that's not in these numbers, that we wanted to highlight, um, of the truancy referrals, not the juvenile justice referrals, these are kids that, like, did, broke into something or, you know, did some other kind of criminal activity, but just in truancy, in twenty, uh, nineteen, we had twenty-nine cases for the year. For twenty twenty, we had thirty-four cases. So far, through mid-May in twenty twenty-one, we're at forty-five cases. Um, the reason being is that, of course, a, a number of children are attending school using, um, the virtual method and, um, are not participating, and that has led to a, a huge number of truancy referrals. Uh, schools are struggling. We're struggling. Um, it has been a struggle for the kids and the families. Um, it is something that our staff are working through, and, and hopefully, by the start of the next school year, we'll be able to get off on a little bit better foot. But that has been one of the biggest changes that we've seen in the juvenile justice area. In our justice program, um, our recovery court participants are down a little bit, again, in part because of, um, fewer referrals going on. Um, our diversions, uh, were pretty, uh, says fifty-seven new cases. I think, um, there might have been just a couple more than that. Um, the Human Services Board is going to be looking at the diversion program at their next meeting because we want to look at the guidance that the Human Services Board set up and then how the program's being utilized because there's some variance, and we want to talk about that. The restitution collected, um, as part of the diversion and other programs in our justice program, we collected over fifteen thousand dollars that went back to victims, uh, individuals and businesses in the county. And, uh, that's a real positive thing, that it went back to them. The only problem is, is it's, um, about half of, or just a little less, or a little bit better than half of the previous year. Again, I think another indication of the economy, um, in our county during twenty twenty. The ADRC, uh, the numbers were pretty, pretty similar, um, in numbers of people that we saw for elder benefits specialists, the disability benefit specialist, adult protection. Um, those numbers stayed pretty similar, um, except for the elder benefit specialist, just went down maybe about eleven percent. Uh, but again, that was because it was hard for the elderly to get out into the community. It wasn't safe for them to do that. The Senior Nutrition Program. Um, our home-delivered meal stayed almost exactly the same between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. We, we kind of were thinking it was, we were going to see this big spike, um, but we did not. The people that were using the services continued to use the services, but we did not see a big increase. The, where we saw a big change, of course, was the congregate meals, and that dropped off about ninety percent because we only operated it about two, a little better than two months in twenty twenty. Um, the good news is, is that, um, a couple of our sites will be opening, um, in the next couple weeks. Uh, Rainbow and Pine Creek and Boondocks, uh, and then we hope to have some additional sites to open in July. We are among the first counties in the, um, state of Wisconsin to be opening up congregate meal sites. Again, uh, as Erica said before, we, because of you keeping the building open, you keeping our feet to the fire, um, we are serving people in a way that's kind of providing leadership to the state. Our transportation programs, our bus rides went way down. Again, we don't, uh, because we only ran it a couple months of the year, and, uh, of course, you don't want to put a whole bunch of people in the same vehicle, so that wasn't, uh, something we had to avoid doing. But the local van rides and the volunteer driver rides, they were down, but they were only down, um, about thirty percent. And that's again because we weren't providing maybe as many rides for things that weren't urgent. We, these are mainly, uh, rides to medical or for groceries. Um, our last slide is on our finances. Our revenues were up about four percent. Our expenses were up a similar amount. Uh, we're projecting a net of a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. About, um, according to a resolution that you passed a couple years ago, up to a hundred thou-, up to a hundred thousand dollars can go into a senior nutrition fund for future use, um, as we continue to see federal and state dollars for those programs drop off. So we expect that there'll be a little better than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, going to the general fund. These numbers are not what the auditors came up with. It's our best guess with the, with the data that we have. So, um, covered a lot of turf, tried to did it, do it as fast as I possibly could, um, but I didn't want, you've got a lot to do tonight, so I didn't want to take up too much of your time. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Sorry, I don't really have a question, but I think, because we have some new board members, if you would just like, for, in a couple sentences, talk about, uh, when economic support, that we're a part of a consortium.
Oh, thank you.
And that we are in a very amazing consortium, and that Trempele County is the leader in this consortium, even though La Crosse is part of it. I'm kind of bragging about our county.
Well, you should. Um, uh, so those of you who are newer, uh, to this board, our Economic Support Program, back in the day, used to, they called the Welfare Office. It's not called that anymore because there's a, um, many different, uh, they've substantially changed what benefits people can sign up for. Um, but in, uh, two thousand and eleven, Governor Walker made some changes. He was actually going to make the program statewide. We, um, the counties worked with the state, and we got it to provide regional models. So we're part of the Western Region for Economic Assistance with, um, there's eight counties in there, La Crosse, Buffalo, Pepin, Clark, Jackson, La Crosse, Vernon, Monroe. I think I hit them all, and then us. And so the nice thing is we share staff. We share cases. Everything is done electronic. So if you're from Trempele County and you need help with getting childcare benefits or food share benefits or, uh, helping your mother sign up for, uh, nursing home benefits, um, see if she's eligible, you could talk to someone in any one of those eight counties. We share cases. We share everything. But we are, other than La Crosse County, we are the only county that has more than one supervisor. Some counties don't even have one full-time supervisor. We have two, and, um, supervisors are really determined based on the talent of the staff that are there, so that speaks very highly of, um, the staff that we have in our economic support area. Sandy Pilkowski and Dana Lee are the supervisors there. Um, we received an award last year for childcare for the quality of our program, so it is a pretty remarkable, um, service that we provide. The accuracy is very high. Uh, customer services, we check all the calls, uh, make sure staff are, uh, talking to all the consumers in a very positive way, in a very helpful way.
What does, wasn't last year we got recognized for our accuracy? It was like ninety-nine point six percent accuracy.
Something, yeah, I can't remember what it was, but it was exceedingly high, yes. Yes, thank you.
So that means our staff is exceptional.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? George?
Perhaps this is a question for another time, and I'm just throwing it out there because you threw it out the last time you, before, last time you were before the county board. We have been, come into what you talked about, what you described as a once-in-a-generation windfall in terms of the money that's coming to us from the federal government. And you challenged us to think about how to, how to spend that money, especially in relationship to the mental health needs in the county. If you could, in just a sentence or two, as Jeannie said, describe what you mean by that. We haven't, we haven't, as far as I know, we haven't begun the discussion. Clearly, there's a need, based on your reporting. How do you envision where money might go to help the issues that exist in the county?
Well, we've had some conversations, again, I think it's a little preliminary because, not the next speaker, but the one after is going to talk a little bit more about the funding that's available to the county, because everybody's in the county's a little bit interested in that money, appropriately so. It's a, it's a unique opportunity, and why wouldn't people be excited about it? The mental health crisis in our county is that we have a lot of individuals in the community who have mental health needs that are not being addressed, and quite frankly, a lot of them start when they're very young. If we were to, if I magically could pick what we could do, we would certainly start with kids and families where there's mental health, either with the parents and/or the children, and really start talking about how do we get that treatment and services. There's, there was research done probably about, about 10 years ago on adverse childhood experiences, and they determined in this research that if kids had four or more adverse childhood experiences, they were 45% more likely to develop mental illness than any other kids. Adverse child experiences include things like extreme poverty, loss of a parent, substance abuse, domestic violence. Pardon?
Divorce.
Divorce.
The parent that's incarcerated.
Yeah, so, or parent with a mental illness. So, there's a number of those things. So, if we know that we, there's kids in our community who are struggling in homes where there are adverse childhood experiences going on, child abuse, neglect, all those kinds of things, if we know those are happening in families, what can we be doing early on for those kids? Because this is a make-your-own-mental-health crisis for the future, so how do we stop that? That's really where we would look at starting.
Can I, I just add to that, because that always excites me, but one of the biggest issues is we continue, the families and kids we see, these are generational, it's intergenerational, it just keeps happening, because these kids experience trauma, and they're adults now, and they only function in the circle of, they develop the same dysfunctional patterns, and so they teach their kids that, and we're just continuing to reproduce that same vicious cycle. But we know there's things that we can do to intervene, and those are the things that we are doing. That's one of the great reasons the CCS program is amazing, but that can only, I mean, only certain people are eligible for that. So, it does a lot of great things, we're seeing a lot of great things happen, but we're only being able to touch a small portion of the people that truly need it. So, there, there are services out there, it's just, I mean, you need the money, and it can't be pennies on the dollar, it needs to be to pay for quality services for people. So, that's, I think what we've kind of focused on is that intergenerational, just trying to intervene on that.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Deb and Erica. Next is Samuel's group update, Kurt.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. I will make this brief, I just want to kind of give you a quick update on things that have been accomplished since the last time we were in front of you in the month of April, and then kind of a forecast of some of the things to expect that will be happening in the next month. So, last month when we met, we talked about O-DIP, and we actually moved forward and had a meeting, the project was approved for the O-DIP Owner Direct Insurance Program, so we're going to be putting the documentation in our bid documents, so that all contractors are going to participate in that Owner Direct Insurance Program, so that'll be coming out in Bid Pack Number One. Bid Pack Number One will actually be hitting the street this week, and what that's going to involve will be the footings and the foundations, the site work in regards to the excavation, and then the utilities within the footprint of the block of, on the west side of Park Street. We're still working on the details of Park Street design for utilities, and obviously in Hobson, the Park Street vacation was approved by the city last week on the 11th, so that's going to tie in our design, and that will be part of Bid Pack Two for the utilities that will be in the street. So, what we're anticipating is that Bid Pack One will go out this week, we typically give two to three weeks for bidders to be able to provide the bid. What we'll do is, when those documents hit the street, we give it about a week, and then we'll have a pre-bid meeting, and then after that, we will have a public bid opening. So, I will work with Paul to make sure that we get the advertisement in the, in the appropriate locations, as well as on your website, and then we will be sending that out to I Square Foot, similar to how we did the demolition across the street as well. I think most of you saw that the demolition is completed. There were some questions at the property committee, is why, why is there still a big hole there? The reason that we didn't have that contractor fill that hole in is because there is compaction performances, and I like to keep that consistent with, with each one of the separate contractors, so we don't have any finger pointing. So, there will be fill that will have to be brought in, but that will be part of the next bid pack, so that compaction is in with, is in compliance with the specifications for the building. So, that's why you see there's a hole there. There will be a small little pond there that's going to be, a retention pond that will be inside of the parking lot, but it won't be near that big, you won't be able to catch fish there someday. But it's obviously bigger because there was a basement there that we took out of the old school. So, what else can I share with you? I did have correspondence with members from the church on the south side of the campus there, and they are open to some discussion about potentially allowing some of the staff to use some of their parking lot during business hours, but not obviously when they're having church functions. So, I'll be working on those details before we shut down Park Street, because I know that's going to be a big issue, but it has been, started some of that discussion, so I don't have all the details worked out in that, but that they are open to that discussion. So, we will be working on that as well. And then Bid Pack Two, we still are targeting to have that come out the latter part of June, and that will be the balance of the project, all structure, structural steel, and all the mechanicals and electricals, and all the infrastructure that's there. And then the renovation portion of the project, we will bid at a later date as well, because that's still working on some of its infant steps of design. So, any questions for me? No? Good groundbreaking, thank you for all participating, so.
Jim's got a question.
Just want to clarify, so there'll be two bid packages?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, bid packs are bid documents that will be put out, there will be multiple bid categories, okay? So, bid categories is different than bid packages. In a bid package, we will have multiple bidders in multiple bid packages, so there'll be a bid category that will be just for excavation, there'll be a bid category that will be for the concrete, there will be a bid category that will be for site utilities, and there'll be multiple bidders on that. In the next bid package, there's going to be a lot of bid categories. So, I know that may be confusing, but there's going to be two sets of documents that go out, and those will be broken down into smaller bid categories, so we're going to have a lot of bids to sort through. The process that will happen is that we will have a public bid opening, probably in this room, or we might want a bigger room, because there'll be bidders that will be here listening to us, read them aloud. We will read them aloud, there will be nothing discussed, it's just be a reading of the bids, and then our team will take them back. When I say our team, the Samuel's Group will qualify the bidders and make sure that we come back with a recommendation to the property committee with a lowest qualified bidder for each bid category, and then that recommendation will be brought to the property committee for approval. And if they approve it, then we will move forward with the award of that contract to those individuals in the bid categories. So, hope that's not too confusing, it's not as difficult as it sounds, but it's a way to get as much of our local participation from our bidders as we can. You can see we had a local contractor do the demo, did an exceptional job, cleaned up the site better than I expected, and they did a, did a great job and turned it around in a, in a timely fashion, so. No questions? All right, I'll keep harassing you each month, if you don't mind, I'd just like to give you a brief update so that you don't feel as though you're in the dark, and if something would happen from month to month, that whether a taxpayer would have a question, or staff member, or any of you would have a question, that way you can, you can bring it up to me here at the, at each month's meeting, so.
Thank you, Kurt.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Okay. Is Olivia on?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I asked to have this put on the agenda. George had asked a question about the, the recovery money, the COVID money that's coming down from the federal government. The COVID Committee has been discussing different things related to COVID, and it was, it was decided that it was probably a good idea to bring Olivia and the Integrity Group in, because this is what they do, this is what they know, and they can kind of explain some of what we're looking at and what they know so far about this. So, that is how this ended up on the agenda.
Okay. Is Olivia on? I don't see her.
She's shizy.
She's up there.
Olivia, can you, can you hear me, Olivia?
I just called her, she said she was going to log on here.
Okay.
Well, it shows her there. But I got to find out from Kathy White, it's not on this. Let me go find Kathy.
I can see her.
Olivia, can you hear us yet?
This could shorten the.
Olivia, are you muted? She's on there twice now.
I don't know if you guys can see it, but she's now on two different screens, she might be having technical difficulty.
Maybe we could just go on and see if we could, I'll call her and see what she's having for trouble, and could we just put, move on and bring her back up when we have a minute?
True.
Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
And, and her purpose in joining us is, everybody's interested in this money, so we wanted her to explain to the board what we can do with the money.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here!
Oh. Okay. Hi, Olivia.
I see your napkin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're on the air.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
We see a napkin, is all we see.
I'm sorry.
We just saw a napkin on the other picture, I don't see you personally, but I saw a napkin.
Yeah, I don't know how to turn my video around on here, but can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we're here, you're fine.
Okay, so, I don't know.
A participant has joined the meeting.
What Ms. Shula gave us for my introduction, but I was going to talk to you guys about the American Rescue Plan Act that came out this week, is that, have we gotten that far?
Yes.
Okay, so, the 5.7.
Five.
That you guys are going to get from the Department of Treasury. The eligible expenditures that we can spend that money on are support public health and expenditures, I'm sorry for being flustered, my computer shut down on me right when I was logging in the first time, so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little flustered. So, basically, what we can spend the money on is the regular mitigation efforts, medical expenses, your behavioral health care, these are the public health, this is the public health arena, so some of your public health and safety staff can be reimbursed with some of these funds, or funded with some of these funds. I know that there was an interest in particularly a behavioral health for relationships or marital, and then also the, the substance abuse, and then the isolation, the public health crisis for people who have been isolating, so that's also very much covered with these funds. You can also use those funds to issue grants to your, to your constituencies, this could be for workers affected, for households affected. There is a, a grant that we are in the process of exploring, and they just came out with the second round of funding called, it's called ERA, Emergency Rental Assistance. The difference with these funds is it's only for homeowners, or it's not for homeowners, it's only for citizens renting homes, but they can get arrears paid, their utilities paid, they can get their houses, their rent payments made going forward, and this is kind of to help with the landlord crisis because of the moratorium on evictions for the past year and a half.
Olivia, can you clarify, Olivia, can you clarify what things we can use the, our $5 million for, and then what other things are in the Rescue Act, or the Rescue Plan Act, that could also benefit the county, such as economic, economic development, or rental utilities, things like that as well? I just, I don't want the board to get confused, thinking that they have to spend their money on all these things, I want them to understand there's a lot of other resources out there to help with some of them as well.
Sure, okay, so the $5 million can be spent on public health expenditures, and that's your mitigation, behavioral health, public health and safety staff, negative impacts caused by the public health emergency, so negative economic impacts caused by COVID. So, these can be your, your, people who've lost their job, the, the county can issue small grants, you can issue grants to small businesses, you can issue assistance for homeowners, anything like that, you can use this $5 million for. You can also use this $5 million to replace your government's revenue. Unlike the other funding last year that came out, the CARES Act money, the A, the ARPA money can be spent on lost revenue. This can, the only caveat is that it cannot be revenue lost due to a change in your tax structure, or something voted on by your constituency. So, if you elected to remove a half-cent sales tax that you had in 2020, or 2019, you elected to do that, you cannot count that as a lost expenditure in 2020, so. But you can, for people who didn't pay their taxes, for businesses that went under and are no longer paying taxes to the county, your, your lost revenue is able to be replaced with this ARPA money. Another thing is, you can pay premium pay, so this would be like Hero Pay, or some people call it Premium Pay. You can do this for your workers that have, you know, worked in lieu of being able to call out your essential workers, you can, you can give them a bump up in pay. You can also help with, invest in your sewer, water, and broadband infrastructures. This is also another change from the CARES Act money to the ARPA money. Before, you could not invest in your water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure, but you can use this money to improve drinking water, support vital wastewater, stormwater infrastructures, or to expand your internet across your county. So, those are the main things, like, our strategy, or our suggestion as a consultant has been to try to cover as much of that money in your lost revenue as possible, so start there, calculate what your lost revenue, this would be our advice, would be to calculate that lost revenue and to use that money, because once you prove your lost revenue, that money goes into your general funds, and you can use that money pretty much however you need to. And so, you, once you've satisfied the repayment with your lost revenues, then that money is, you can use it on whatever you wanted to. So, anything that, you know, wasn't covered last year, or anything that, you know, we've been denied on for something else, or, you know, whatever you guys want to spend it on, you cannot spend it on, on pensions and stuff like that. There's a few caveats that you can't use, but pretty much, it's very flexible money, they're, they're very flexible with this new money. And so, that's the, the long and the short of the, of the ARPA money. Does anybody have any questions specifically?
Yes, I do, Mr. Sherman. Olivia, this is a board member, you may have already answered this question, but I'm going to ask it specifically, just to get a, a specific answer. The county just embarked on a large $43.5 million building project, can any portion of this ARP money be used to defray, to pay down that loan?
Okay, so, the, is it the, the county, the county building that you guys were working on?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, you can do the, the water, the sewer, infrastructure-type stuff, if that's part of your investment in that, then possibly, my best bet for you would be to use your lost revenues that you claim for your lost revenues that go into your general funds, and that way you can use that. And that way you can use that money to go towards this program. So if you, let's just use round numbers, let's say you were a million and a half low in your revenues in 2020, then we can prove the 2020. This money also doesn't have to be spent until 2024, December 31st, 2024. And so we can also use the lost revenues, the projections for 2021 and even going forward. But if you're not comfortable with that, I think that we can make a good case for your losses in 2020 and I think we could probably do a pretty decent projection of your losses in 2021. That would be my suggestion going forward. If your lost revenues are somewhere around $1.5 million and we can, you know, estimate and prove that, then we can have that $1.5 million satisfied and then put into your general revenue. And then it's, it's, it's not a windfall because you actually had a revenue loss, but it's a $1.5 million with no additional attachments to it. You've proven your expenditures with your lost revenue, with your tax deductions and everything, and that money is free for you to spend however you'd like.
Thank you. We may need clarification in the future about how we prove lost revenue, but right, that's beyond this discussion.
Okay.
Any other questions of Olivia? Debbie?
I just want to clarify, there is additional funding in the ARPA for other things like rental assistance, like some economic.
Yes, ma'am, I was just gonna, yeah, I was just doing one at a time, I was going to move on to the.
Okay, so she'll get into that, but the $5 million that we have, the COVID committee, and Sally can talk more about it, but the COVID committee is recommending that, we kind of want to do this presentation for you. I think the demands and the need and the requests coming to you will far exceed the $5 million. And so we want to tell you about this, tell you what's possible. And then in an upcoming meeting, really look to you to help us set some priorities versus first come, first served and do this in a meaningful way that suits what the county really needs. It's your decision, but we want to find a way that's fair to everybody and to fair to all the requests that are going to come in. Because there are a lot of demands, there's the new facility, there's lost revenues, there's economic development, there's all kinds of needs in the community. And so, but I'm going to turn over to Olivia because she can talk about some of the other things that this fund can help with.
Okay, so outside of the direct allotment to the county of the 5.78 or 8.7, I'm sorry, I'm having a dyslexic memory right this second, there are, there is money allocated to the state of Wisconsin for all counties that have a population less than 200,000. As you know, Tremblow County has a population less than 200,000, so we have to go through Wisconsin to achieve these funds. But there is funds available for your citizens for rental assistance and utility assistance. And so that's what I was talking about earlier. You, the county can use some of this 5 point, some of the, I'm going to call that ARPA money and then I'm going to call the other money ERA money, so it's Emergency Rental Assistance. And then the ARP, ARPA money is American Rescue Plan Act. And so that ARPA money comes directly to the county and that's what we just talked about. You can spend it on lost revenue, infrastructure, broadband, wastewater, you can spend it on your public health, safety measures, all those things. You can also pass through some of that money as grants into your, to your citizens. But there is another pot of money that goes directly, is allocated directly for rental and utility assistance for people who are in arrears for their rental and arrears for their utilities. And so in areas where the county owns some of the utilities and they've seen a lack of funding for their utilities, where people haven't been paying their bills and they've had to keep the water going and they've had to keep the lights on because you can't turn them off, right? Legally, you can't turn them off. And so counties who facilitate these services have seen a loss. And so this money is supposed to help recoup that money. So I know that you guys do your own water and sewage and garbage, is that correct?
No. No, we don't. No.
Okay. Okay, so I must be confused. Okay, so this money though could go to your, it would be something you would apply for as a pass through and citizens would apply for this, these funds and they would be made whole for their arrears back to March 2020 and then forward through September or no, through January 2022. So it would go, they would pay almost two years' worth of rent for someone who is behind on their rent, as long as they can prove their average, median income, average median income is less than 50% of the area, area median income. And then also that they've had some kind of COVID-related impact, like they've lost their job, they worked in an industry that was shut down, they have, you have an executive order that extended them to be out of work or to reduce their work or they worked in a, they were barber, barbers or dentists or people like that who had to reduce their, their hours due to COVID and then felt the impact and were negatively affected in their bills, right? So that money, like I said, we'd have to go through the state of Wisconsin because of our lack of population. But there are funding sources available if that's something that you're interested in passing through to your constituency.
Okay. Any other questions for Olivia? Yes, Mr. Brandt.
We have a housing authority in the county and I'm not sure, as, as Olivia was talking about the helping with rent, not being able to shut off utilities or evict anyone, it occurred to me, even though I, I know very little about how the housing authority works, if that's, if that's something that, if that's an area where that would be appropriate to, to look into.
Probably.
Because we are, we are landlords for a significant amount of people within the county.
Sure, yeah, and so this money, so there's two pots of, there's ERA 1 money and then ERA 2 money. ERA 1 money has, the money gets allocated directly to the landlord. And in cases where the landlord doesn't want to participate because maybe they have an interest in evicting this person once the moratorium is lifted on June 30th, the ERA 2 money came out and that money can be given directly to the tenant and that person can satisfy without the landlord's permission their rental arrears, right? And so same thing with utility companies, right? So ERA 1 money comes in and they, somebody would send in and say, I have a, a bill for my electric bills, two months late, it's $500. And the county would cut the check or the state would cut the check directly to the utility company. The ERA 2 money is less, less stringent and then the actual tenant can receive the money for the, for the power, electric company and then would be on the hook to kind of make sure they satisfy that rent or that, that payment. But that's all stuff that we could get into if that's something you're interested in pursuing. I would suggest it because A, it looks really good, like to be able to pass on some money to the federal government or from the federal government to your constituents who may be feeling really hurt. And not to mention that Wisconsin got over $322 million for this program. So there should be plenty of money and, you know, it's only fair that, you know, Tremblow County's citizens get some of that money as well. So that's our, that would be something that we would help you with if that's something you're interested in, but I'm just here to provide information and not really to persuade you either one way. I don't get any kickback from the federal government whether you guys take the, take the plan or not, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one more question.
Yes, Mr. Brandt.
This goes to Sally and Deb. It sounds like the COVID committee has been, has been thinking about this certainly much more than any other committee at this point. What it is that Olivia is talking about would require an infrastructure to, a way of communicating to people what was available and also how to, how to connect the money to the people, who writes checks, who's, who makes a decision as to whether or not this person is eligible. And that requires people hours and other resources and are we in, you know, we're just sitting here listening to this, we're not prepared to create that kind of a system right now or is the COVID committee doing something along those lines or is this something the county board wants to send off to another committee or create another group to do? Sally, what do you think?
Well, this, this is, the COVID committee is about, was created to work on policy for within the courthouse, policy for, you know, employees and such and to deal with things related to policy and such. This kind of intertwined then with recovering money lost by the county that was expended on responding to the crisis and responding to the pandemic. And so we kind of ended up by virtue of that. And when, when I had come to the committee, to the full board last summer to encourage us to engage the Integrity Group and Olivia to assist us with figuring out how to access the resources that were available to us, we certainly, I don't think I ever anticipated this kind of a turnout where suddenly money would be coming from the heavens. So I'm not really sure, but what I do know is that there's so many questions about the money, there's so many pieces of information that come out a little bit at a time and Olivia knows what she's talking about. So the COVID committee has discussed it really in terms of looking at what, how it would relate to county operations, county policies, reimbursements and such as that. But that, the, the decision of how we would establish to do that, I'm not entirely sure that falls within the framework of what that committee was established for.
So just real quick, I am not trying to sell myself, sell ourselves or anything like that, but we do actually run a grant program. We have a portal and we provide access to these grants for other counties. We've had, we're doing it on multiple levels at different places. But the state of Wisconsin may have a portal and may have a, a program that they already have instituted in place for some of the smaller counties. And all it would really be for us is kind of getting the word out to your citizens, which we can help with pamphlets and things like that. We have been working on for other counties, we have templates, we know how to communicate to people, we can do webinars, we can answer questions, we can do all of those kind of things to help, help your citizens. Like we, you know, we've done landlord seminars where we talk directly to landlords about, you know, how they can get with their, their tenants and help them apply for these funds so they can go back to their arrears and satisfy that kind of thing. There's a whole lot of things that we've been doing with, with this money in other areas. But again, today was more, more geared towards just kind of letting you know what's out there. And we're always here to support the county and help in any way that we can. And we, you know, we've, we are submitting over a million dollars in FEMA funding. We've, you know, assisted in kind of guidance through the CARES Act dollar, the 3, the $3 million plus dollars that you guys received for CARES and we're prepared to help you with the new money coming in. So, you know, whatever you need from us, we'll be happy to provide. But again, this is, this was really just to, supposed to be informative and so that's where we're trying to go, but we're here and happy to help in any way that we can.
Did that answer your question, George?
It, it really did and the answer that I'm getting right now is that we don't have a system to make this possible. We currently do not, and Olivia, thank you for mentioning that Wisconsin may be assisting smaller communities with, with how to advertise this, but we currently don't have a system to make use of this money, the money that could conceivably go to citizens directly or to landlords or to utilities or for that matter to, to businesses that, that don't exist anymore or are struggling. So I am, I would really encourage us to think about how to make that happen. If, if the Integrity Group has templates and portals and are willing to do, they've, they've shown themselves to be extraordinary. I, I'm really not trying to be sarcastic, but it sure looks like you're running this business out of your kitchen. And, and yet you're doing this for the counties all over the country and, and doing an amazing job for, for Tremblow County.
George, I would just say that I think the first question prior to your question is what are the priorities that this county is going to set for this funding? Because there's, there's a lot of needs and there's a lot of, going to be a lot of requests, all of them very good. And so this county needs to figure out how are you going to prioritize and determine what you're going to spend the money on? And then from there, again, if it's going to be grants to citizens, what mechanisms exist that we could tap into, I think is, is the question that might follow. At least that would be how I would recommend we look at it.
Rick, you're on the COVID committee. Actually, I think there's a, I mean, I'm not fighting over whose question goes first, but, but certain, certain pots of the money are, are to be used only for rent and utilities. So, you know, that's, clearly that's, that's an option that, you know, we're not going to try to use that to, to do the water system and the new justice system, so.
You're the board member, you're right.
What's that?
You're the board member, you're right.
Oh, my God, don't say that to me.
Oh, God, don't say that to me.
Ms. Nutter, you had a comment?
Yeah, I envisioned something similar to what we did a few years ago when we got money from, I forget what it's called, from EXC.
CapEx, that's what I was just going to.
CapEx funds. We had a committee that was made up of board members and citizens, we did RFPs into the community, we did a lot of information went out and people came back and we reviewed all of the requests for grants and programs and that was like over $3 million.
It was 4.2.
Yeah, so we handled $4.2 million within our own community and how we made decisions to have that money go out. And that was like an amazing group of people and we spent, and the referrals had, the RFPs had to be presented to this committee as any RFP would be when you're requesting to get a grant from the county. And I felt that money was very wisely spent and went to really excellent, excellent programs within the county. So I feel strongly about considering something similar to that because the people of the county really, you know, human, there was a lot of human suffering during the last year and brought on by COVID. So I'm just throwing that out there as something that worked really well. We spent $4.2 million and it went to really good programs and that every penny was spent and used.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise we'll move on.
I was going to say the same thing as.
It could get to be a long meeting here. I want to thank you, Olivia, thank you for your time and presentation.
Thank you, Olivia. Yeah, please feel free, if you guys come up with some other questions to get with Deborah, shoot us an email, we'll be happy to answer anything that we can. So if you guys need us, you know how to find us and I will talk to you guys soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to item D, highway petitions. You want to read the petitions?
Okay, I'm going to read the petition so I don't have to read them again.
A participant has left the meeting.
Okay, the, I just read the first one in its entirety, then the rest is just the sub, sub of it. To the annual county board of supervisors, Tremblow County, ladies and gentlemen, the record, records in the office of the town clerk show that the amounts given below have been provided in the calendar year 2021 for county aid road construction in the town of Albion in Tremblow County. The sums available have been raised as shown below for the improvement of roads named therein and at the places designated. All action taken in providing the sums named have been in accordance with the provisions of section 83.14 of the laws of 1923 and the taxes produced by said levies are not in excess of the legal maximums. The name of the road is Steery Road. The improvement is seal coat and the county share is $17,845.80. The next one's in the town of Arcadia, the North Creek Road. Pulverized shape, shoulder and, and pavement, county share $64,315.30, well, it says 37 cents here. I think on the resolution is 36. The next one is town of Burnside for Doris Guza Road. It's an overlay, county share $9,516.52. The next one is town of Caledonia, 11th Street for reconstruct, county share is $20,563.48. Also. Also, on 11th Street, County Road M to Sandpit, crack fill and seal, but I don't have a dollar figure on that one, so there must be nothing. Town of Chimney Rock, Hawkinson Valley Road is a seal coat for $8,069.57. Town of Dodge, Smickle Valley Road, seal coat, county share $13,143.19. And the town of Ettrick is Rogness Cooley Road, county share $35,527.17. Also, Peacock Road, seal coating, county share $3,492. The town of Gale, Gilmeister Road is block top overlay, county share $30,311.88. The town of Hale, Scoyan Road, blade patch and seal coat, county share $14,000. Also, By Nelson Road, blade, patch and seal coat, county share $17,417.39. And also, Stig Road, blade, patch and seal coat, county share $17,000. The town of Lincoln is Wit Hill Road, resurfacing, county share $14,877.68. And the town of Pigeon, Fitch Cooley Road, repave, county share $25,664.93. The town of Preston, Shelley Ridge Road, chip seal and blade patching, county share In town of Sumner, Golden Valley Road, chip, seal and blade patch, county share $16,751.30. In the town of Tremblow, Schubert Road widening, county share $16,667.83. And also, Delaney Road widening, $16,667.82. And the town of Unity is Maug Road, seal coat, county share $22,270.14. And all the petitions were signed by the individual town boards.
Okay. Go on to resolutions, 6A. Read the resolution.
Whereas various towns here and after named have filed petitions for county aid for roads under the provisions of section 83.14 of the Wisconsin statutes. Now be it resolved that the said revised petitions are hereby granted and the county appropriations for the year 2022 are made as follows. And I don't know, I hope somebody was following through, the same numbers were the same except for that one by a penny, but I'm guessing that they changed that one penny so that it came out to the even $400,000. Introduced by Tremblow County Highway Committee, John Austin, Randy Tolleson, Kurt Scoyan, Doug Winters, Kellen Nelson.
Looking for approval? Motion by Scoyan to approve, seconded by Mr. Winters. Any discussion? There ain't no discussion, we'll call the roll, this calls from money, so.
It's money, right, 8314. Okay. Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tolleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes. Her mouth went, are you muted? Go like this. Okay, that's better yet, shaking your head, yes. John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Joe Feltes. Oh, yeah, he's not here, I'm sorry. George Brandt.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Oh, that's right, he was in for operation.
Was that why he?
Yeah.
Okay, because he didn't call or anything, so.
Excuse me, Paul, the one I have here has Schultz on it yet.
Uh-oh.
Did they do it again? I talked to them before to change it.
There's the chair of the highway department, right there.
I wonder why he can't get that changed?
Talk to somebody with some influence, Randy.
We will get that fixed.
Just change your name to Schultz, Randy Schultz.
Maybe somebody from the highway department is watching right now tonight.
At least they got one.
Huh?
I was going to say, at least they got one right, they got one right. The next one's right.
The other one's right, okay.
Some are used to wrong.
You never have to change.
God, still Nelson.
Yeah.
You ready for the next one?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas section 83.03 subsection 2 of the statutes provides that any, if any county board shall determine to improve any portion of the county trunk system of prospective state highway with county funds, it may assess not more than 40% of the such improvement against the town, village, or city in which the improvement is located, provided the amount of such tax shall not exceed $1,000 in any year. Whereas the county clerks shall certify such tax to the town, village, or city clerk, who shall put same in the tax roll to be collected and paid to the county treasurer in the next year. Now be it resolved that by virtue of the authority granted by section 83.03, section, subsection 2, the following improvements be made on the county trunk highway system of prospective state highways. And it's all 26 municipalities, town, cities, and villages on the county trunks in their municipality, 1,000 from the local and 1,500 from the county. Introduced by Tremblow County Highway Committee, John Austin, Randy Tolleson, Kurt Scoyan, Kellen Nelson, Doug Winters.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Tolleson, seconded by Nelson. We did have some discussion on it because, on the committee, because we thought, wow, $1,000, it's really almost immaterial. At one time, this was really more important than it is, but did someone on the committee want to discuss this further from the highway committee?
Sorry.
Or you just want to send it through, and we'll discuss it next year?
I'm not sure what the issue is. Is this not the maximum allowed by law?
What it says in the statutes is right now, so I think a good avenue to go would be to ask the legislature to change that dollar figure to a higher dollar.
My understanding, Mr. Chair, is that the townships will kind of bank this money and then come with the.
Actually, it's municipalities.
It's for county, for county roads in their municipality.
It's the county roads within the municipality.
You know, City of Wilder, Blair, villages, all those. But bottom line is what kind of convinced me, we better keep it on because it has fiscal impact. Without this approval of this resolution, Tremblow County will fund county roads through municipalities at 100%. We won't get anything, so. But our thought was, well, $1,000 don't really go very far anyway. We're going to try and pass it just the way it is this year and see if we can get more.
That'd be my suggestion is, you know, petition the state to change the dollars, because this has not been changed since 1923.
Yeah. See back when they were hauling, basically, this was, came in when they were hauling rock and stuff, so it actually did something back then. It doesn't do much now.
And only Doug remembers that.
Oh.
Is it 1929?
Is it 29 or 20? 20, 1923, I think it is, yeah, 23.
Okay.
I vaguely remember.
So, the motion's been made and seconded, we ought to call the roll.
Okay. Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Doug Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha. George Brandt. Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tolleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
There she is. John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
16 to 0. Good deal.
Okay, under Environmental Land Use Committee, rezone for commercial on, what is it, County Board C?
Whereas Kellen M. and Lindsay A. Nelson, landowner petitioner, have requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Hale for a bill, for a building for light office use for a seed chemical sales business. And whereas the rezone is on approximately 1.46 acres more or less, and whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to section 59.69 parentheses 5 of the Wisconsin statutes, whereas the town of Hale supports the rezone request, whereas the Environment Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from residential 8, R8, to commercial, C, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated. Introduced by Environment Land Use Committee, George Brandt, Beth Killian, Kurt Scoyan, Carol Bowick, Kathy Ziegler, Charles Wallach, Randy Severson.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve.
Killian, on second.
Motion by Mr. Brandt, seconded by Ms. Killian. Okay. Any discussion? Would you like to explain it?
Yes, it was a very contentious public hearing.
Yeah.
Many people for and against, hours and hours.
Are you kidding?
Yeah.
You're like, what?
I'm sorry, I know that sarcasm doesn't come over well. Doesn't well, work well in the minutes, just don't write any of that down. No.
I got it all, it's all on tape.
As it's described, the public hearing was held, the town supported the rezone. Kellen was there in person to describe the use, and it's basically an office building and a couple acres that it sits on. And if anyone has any questions related, he's here to talk about it.
Okay. Any questions from the?
We voted unanimously for it.
Not quite.
Not quite. One abstention, yeah.
Kellen did abstain from voting for his own, but anyway, any other questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
I abstain.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tolleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
15 to 0.
Okay. Ordinance, rezone exclusive ag from.
Whereas Genuine Homes LLC in care of Rachel Shimon, I might pronounce it wrong, I'm sorry, landowner petitioner, has requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Sumner for storage units, and whereas the rezone is on approximately eight acres more or less, and whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to section 59.69 parentheses 5 of the Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the town of Sumner supports the rezone request, whereas the Environment Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from exclusive agriculture 2, EA 2, to commercial, C, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated. Introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, George Brandt, Beth Killian, Kurt Scoyan, Carol Bowick, Kathy Ziegler, Kellen Nelson, Charles Wallach, Randy Severson.
Okay. Motion for it.
Second.
Motion by Chuck Wallach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scoyan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Again, the public hearing was held, there were some concerns from folks who had read about it, but, and who thought it was located someplace else. Our staff corrected that for them, the town supported it. This is literally on the east edge of the city of Osseo, there's commercial developments to the west of it and to the northwest of it, so it fits in very well with the development that's going out Highway 10.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Do, I have a quick, George.
Yeah.
What's going to be built there?
This, actually, there was some personal discussion between a member of the committee and the people who are building it. Oh.
She was on, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rachel was on there. I don't know where she went. Kathy, are you still out there?
Yeah.
No, Kathy.
I'm on.
Oh, Rachel Shimon? Yeah.
It's someplace in there.
Shimon, if you want to discuss, if you want to tell Supervisor Nutter the nature of the storage sheds or the storage structures?
Oh, it's just storage structures?
Yes.
Oh, that's all, that's?
Well, but more.
Go ahead.
So, it's a rezone of eight acres of the current parcel, I believe it's about 24 acres total. So, rezone of eight, and we're going to start with, we're hoping to start with two storage buildings. One of them will be for RVs and boats, and the other one will be a mini storage unit complex, so.
Oh, thank you, I was just curious what.
Okay. Rachel, any other questions or comments? Not, we'll just call the roll.
Okay. John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yep.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Scoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha. George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tolleson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Okay. Resolution urging Congress to support national policy on climate change based on carbon free and dividend.
Whereas increases in global average temperatures, the number of, and intensity of extreme weather events, sea level rise, and the melting of glacial and arctic ice indicate that the global climate is changing. Whereas studies by the Wisconsin Initiative on Climate Change impacts, projects that if climate changes continued unchecked, Tremblow County, located in the Driftless region, will experience increasingly warmer temperatures, especially during the winter months, and increasing amounts of precipitation and extreme rain events. Whereas Tremblow County has experienced extreme rain events in the past five years, which have caused extensive damage to its roads, bridges, culverts, wastewater treatments, facilities, and other critical infrastructure. Whereas such changes in climate may also have adverse effects on Tremblow County's forests and timber industry by decreasing suitable habitat for such commercially important species as white and red oak, increasing the risk of wildfires, and increasing stress from forest pests, disease, and non-native species. And whereas such changes in climate may also have adverse impacts on Tremblow County agriculture by increasing erosion from extreme rain events, hampering access to fields at critical times, and causing alterations in late winter freeze slash thaw cycles. Whereas agriculture and forestry can contribute to addressing climate change through sustainable, sustainable land use practices that sequester carbon in the soil. And whereas such changes in climate may also have adverse impacts on Tremblow County's winter tourism economy by decreasing the duration of winter snow cover and rendering winter conditions less predictable. And whereas the mission of Tremblow County, as stated in the comprehensive plan, is, parentheses, or quotes, "to act as stewards of the fiscal and physical resources of the county to improve our quality of life and environment in which we live," end of quote. And that the county will, quote again, "provide safe, clean, natural environment areas where the public can enjoy." And provides the county will, again in quotes, "balance economic viability of commercial and industrial uses with the environmental and social well-being of the citizens," end quote. And whereas recent reports by the UN's Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and the US government indicate that to avoid the worst potential impacts of climate change, urgent action is needed to reduce carbon emissions. And whereas, in order to reduce carbon emissions most effectively and efficiently, leading economists, including four past chairs of the Federal Reserve Board, 27 Nobel laureates, Nobel laureates, and 15 past chairs of the Council of Economic Advisers, recommend a gradual increasing carbon tax on fossil fuels with the proceeds thereof returned to American households as dividends and with a border adjustment system to protect the competitiveness of American firms, both nationally and internationally. And whereas bills based on a carbon fee and dividend, such as Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, which meets all of those criteria and has bipartisan support, have been introduced in Congress. And whereas competent studies have projected that if such legation, legislation is enacted, it will result in a substantial reduction in carbon emissions, as well as increases[1777.80] reduction in carbon emissions as well as increases in GDP and employment, and that the dividends received by most low and moderate income households will be more than enough to offset price increases due to the carbon fee, and whereas the Growing Climate Solutions Act is a bill with bipartisan support that provides incentives for farmers and foresters to adopt sustainable land use practices that will also help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tremple County Board of Supervisors urges the United States Congress to pass legislation based on the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act and the Growing Climate Solutions Act without delay, and be it further resolved that the Tremple County Board of Supervisors urges that a carbon fee and dividend bill passed by Congress must include protections for farmers from rising fossil fuel costs, specifically on-farm fuels and fertilizer use, to safeguard a major economic segment of our rural economy and the security and international competitiveness of our nation's food supply, and be it further resolved that the Tremple County Clerk be directed to send copies of this resolution to Senator Ron Johnson, Senator Tammy Baldwin, Representative Ron Kind, Governor Tony Evers, State Senators Kathy Bernier and Jeff Smith, and State Representatives Trig Pranchinsky and Jesse James, introduced by Environment Land Use Committee, George Brandt, Beth Killian, Carol Bowick, Charles Wallach, Kathy Zeglin, Kurt Skoyan, Randy Severson, Kellen Nelson.
Move to approve this resolution?
Most by Ms. Nutter. Second by Mr. Brand.
Michelle.
Oh.
Uh, anyway, we have John Skog, the author of the.
He's right up there.
He's right up there.
Oh, I knew it was here.
I'm prepared to answer any question.
I have to say that John is very committed to this, and you can tell by the, the handouts that he gave you, which are basically the, um, uh, PowerPoint that he gave to the committee, uh, he was also accompanied by, um, two Whitehall students who were.
Uh, juniors in high school from Whitehall.
And whose names are.
Noah Lis, uh, Kevin, Kevin Connell and Nyla Lysowski.
Yeah, and, and they were very, um, uh, erudite in their presentations, specifically related to the concerns they had for the future of our environment. John did prepare, prepare a couple of slides to, uh, that might answer any questions anybody has. I also want to point out that, that during the discussion, we tabled this for one month and had considerable amount of discussion, um, both Carol Bowick and Kellen Nelson pointed out the, uh, um, the effect that something like this would have on agriculture, and, and some of the references to the, the agriculture and forestry related, um, pieces in here come from our committee members.
Okay, would you like to?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Oh.
Where'd it come from?
Michelle.
Michelle.
Oh, Michelle, go ahead.
Okay, um, if you could explain for myself and the public that, that further be resolved where must include protections for farmers from rising fossils, et cetera, et cetera, could you explain, do they have to apply for protection, or what, what exactly, how are they planning to like protect it?
Yeah, so, so as George, that's a very good question, as George alluded, um, the, the committee had a discussion, I think at the March meeting where this was raised, and it turns out the, the, uh, the, the bill that we are favoring, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, uh, provides exemptions for on-farm diesel fuel use, however, so, so the, the increase or the carbon tax, which will be placed on fossil fuels, uh, farmers will be exempt for their on-farm fuel use, not for transportation, so those fuel costs are, are not included. What is, what, what we discovered through Kellen's questioning really was that nitrogen input fertilizer is not, is not included in that exemption, so when you increase the cost of a barrel of oil, that will trickle down to an increase in cost in the nitrogen fertilizer, the way it's produced today, and so that second resolution was, uh, intended to, to highlight to our, our congressional representatives that if we do something like this, pass a bill like the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, we, Tremple County, believe that we need to include additional protections beyond the on-farm fuel diesel exemption, and that would include fertilizer, which is the, the, the next major component of, I, I think, a, the, the farming expense that would be affected by an increase in oil prices, which will happen with this resolution, but the point of the, the carbon tax is the government collects the money and then gives it back to each citizen in equal share, um, so that those increases in prices, uh, on products like gas, like your, your electricity that will happen, it will be, you will be able to accommodate those increases caused by the implementation of a bill like this, and so to me, it's the, this approach is the, let's say, the most market-driven approach that I have observed of all the different climate legislation is out there. There's the stick approach, where the government can come in and just say, everybody's gotta meet these emission levels, and that provides no protection to, to consumers or American families when those, uh, companies that have to meet those emission standards now have to, uh, adopt their practice or change their practices. The Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act protects consumers by the dividends, you tax and you give the proceeds back to the American people, and you're, you're taxing at the, the mine, at the well, you know, at the point source, which is where the, the carbon is, um, generated.
Mr. Chair. Yeah. Again, this, this came to the Environment and Land Use Committee, John had actually connected with, um, the Director and myself and, and asked to be put on the agenda, and the staff had been working with, um, extension in the past for, uh, related to sequestering carbon in the soil through minimum tillage and, and, and edu, and, and educating where they could, their, Kellen, um, has pointed out that we, we knew that there were farmer groups that had been working on issues related to, uh, minimum tillage and so forth for a long time, how to minimize, uh, inputs and so forth, so it, it went along with things that have been going along, going around in the conservation part of Department of Land Management as well as extension and the greater agricultural community. This, I think the, um, the students who, who came really put a face on the whole, it ain't us who are gonna pay for this kind of idea, um, a couple sixteen-year-olds letting us know that they were worried about their future, were, were very helpful in the discussion.
Okay. Do you have more?
The reasons, the, the, the reasons why I believe this would be valuable to approve are listed there, but one is, just as George said, it's an opportunity for this county to show vision and leadership on a very important issue of our time, and, and as you said, most of us in this room, it won't affect us, we'll be gone by the time the major effects start, uh, happening, which we are already starting to see, so I, I exhort the, the committee, thank you first of all for hearing this resolution and the time that you've put in, I really want to thank George and the Environment and Land Use Committee for hearing me three times, uh, and, and so, uh, I, I think it's a real opportunity on a very pragmatic approach to solving a big problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Mr. Zeglin.
I'd, I'd like to address Mr. Skog, ask me, I do have a question for Mr. Skog. I had only one contact on this resolution from a constituent or from a county resident, and it was negative, or it was in opposition, and so I'd like to voice that person's, um, opposition, and, and because I think he may be speaking for, for other people, and, um, I don't have the email with me, but I'll, I'll try to summarize as best I can. He, this person was, uh, thought it was a bad idea, he thought it would, it could be better done, he did not argue with the idea of, uh, controlling emissions, but he thought it, there had to be a better way of doing it, and he was, uh, he saw this resolution or this whole idea as a sort of variation on the tax and spend, um, argument that we used to hear a lot of, um, if anybody my age will remember that, that accusation being made, this is just another tax and spend, uh, bill, and he was very skeptical, uh, he was very certain that this would make gas prices go up, and very skeptical that any benefit would ever be returned to the people who drive the cars, so it was not an agricultural argument at all, it was a, a John Q. Public argument, could you answer that?
Uh, the, the concern is valid, from the standpoint that prices will go up, and that is the whole point for the dividend, and in the packet, there is a chart where this has been extensively studied by, uh, very senior economists, um, uh, and the, the overriding opinion is, uh, based upon this analysis, is that this will actually benefit people, and, and there's an environmental justice component to this, because the, the studies that have been done show that people will not be adversely affected, yes, gas will go up at the pump, but for an average family of four, um, if this bill were introduced, the dividend that they would receive would be on the order of three thousand dollars per year, and so those monies could be spent however they want, but clearly, there would, there would have to be a fraction of that, a, a good fraction of that, that goes to paying the increased price that you'll see at the pump, the increase in perhaps your electricity. Why, why do we want to do this? The reason why is if you tax that carbon, it will make things get more expensive, but it will drive innovation in the marketplace where businesses are not gonna stand for having to pay increasingly higher taxes or higher, uh, costs for whatever product you're talking about, just about any product today has, can be traced back to oil, okay? And so the, the idea is this will accelerate a transition to renewable energy and, and techno, and technological innovation to, uh, 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 move away from oil, a big issue in our economy, it's not an easy problem, but it can happen, and it's happening already, wind and solar are already starting to predominate in, in new construction and new power plants. This measure, this, this act will accelerate that transition, which, which most climate scientists now are saying, you know, we have the technology to solve this problem, but the, where we're at, uh, in, in terms of the, the urgency, is we need to do it much faster than what is happening right now, and this is a way to do that, so, so this, so he's right in that regard, but I would, I would take issue with this being tax and spend, because this is, some people say it's not, it shouldn't even be considered a tax, because a tax is where you take and you keep and you do other things, the government spends it how, uh, on other things, this is a tax that is levied by the government, but then distributed either through tax refunds or a monthly check, that detail hasn't been worked out, but it's given back to the citizens, and so it's, it's not being taken and for the government to do something with. The administrative costs to, to, to collect the money and then pay it out, you know, there's, there's some administrative costs, and those would have to be covered by the, the income that is generated, but, but it's not a, um, it's, it's not kept by the government, it's paid back out to citizens in equal portion across the United States. Kids get a half, a half portion.
Mr. Nelson, you got a comment?
Yeah, I, I, I want a, a number of things to say, uh, 'cause John and I have conversed on this, uh, at, at some length, and, uh, we have made some good progress, I believe, and I, and I do like to be it further resolved, uh, statement that was added, I mean, that does add a lot of teeth to it, and it is thing, something that I like to see. I do, however, still have some concerns regarding it, um, and one, I want to echo a little bit of what Supervisor Zeglin commented with regards to, um, to tax and spend, you know, where, where I see it a little differently is if you look at a manufacturing business, you know, food company, doesn't really matter, um, if, if you, you're gonna have to pay a tax for, you know, whatever you're doing, they're not just gonna pay the tax, they're gonna add that tax cost onto the products that, so everything at your grocery store is gonna cost more, everything that, you know, trucks around this country, I, I, this is, I think there'll be a very substantial tax, especially on us more rural Americans, and, and I actually do think the gas tax will disproportionately affect us here in rural Wisconsin, we don't drive, most of us, five miles or something a day, you know, twenty, thirty, fifty, hundred, you know, we're, we are mobile creatures now, and so I do believe this disproportionately will affect us here in rural Wisconsin, um, not to mention, uh, and of course, my largest concern still goes back to agriculture, I, I, like I said, I, I commend, um, Mr. Skog for all of his work on this, 'cause I know he's put a lot of work into it and passion, but I still have those concerns.
So, Kellen, let me just address one of them, I, I did go back because of the concern, and I, I looked at, you can actually drill to each state and understand how the dividend will affect your ability to, um, absorb the effects of the increased costs and, or the increased costs, 'cause, 'cause you're right, very, almost, like I said earlier, almost every product that we purchase nowadays, whether it's some, something derived from plastic, uh, your food, you can almost all trace it back to oil, so products will, uh, increase in price, uh, but that's the whole purpose of the dividend, and these studies that have been done to look at, okay, how will people really be affected if we place this tax on, prices go up at the, at the stores, will people be at a disadvantage? And, and the, the studies are very thorough and very clear, and they say that most people at the lower income brackets, and they break it down into quintiles, one, two, three, four, five, the people that will benefit the least are the high-income earners, the people that will benefit the most are in the quintiles one, two, and three, and it's like ninety-four percent of, of individuals in those income brackets that will be maintained whole or will actually come out a little bit ahead. This is not a way for people to make money, this is an attempt, the dividend, to make people whole while this innovation in the energy economy is going on to convert away from fossil fuels to renewables.
Mr. Nelson.
So, uh, in follow-up that, so if, I guess my bigger concern is if we're gonna address climate change, and we agree that businesses are for the most part going to pass these costs back on, and then the consumer gets, yep, I get that, what are we really gonna be fixing if we're not actually reducing carbon?
We, but that, so, sorry, I wasn't clear, the, 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 the effect of placing a tax on the carbon will be that, uh, the, the oil companies are, in fact, what's, what you should know is that the, the tax on carbon is progressive, so it goes up year after year, okay, and so it will become untenable if you run a business that you just keep accepting those costs, and so what will happen is the, there will be, uh, a, a rapid conversion to renewable energy sources away from carbon, you can see it in electric vehicles right now, electric vehicles are like two percent of sales, but it's positioned to go into an inflection point, uh, as more charging stations become available, battery technology improves, et cetera, et cetera, and if you convert to electric vehicles, but you don't convert the, the energy that you're producing from burning coal, the electric vehicle doesn't do you any good, because you're still burning coal or oil to make the electricity run your car, so the, the tax on the oil will cause an, 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 an innovation explosion, which we're already seeing, as I said, with wind and solar, but there are other technologies that will come online, such as safe nuclear, I think hydropower will gain new improvement or interest as well. I think hydropower will gain new improvement or interest as well. And there are many other technologies that will come before. Today, we say wind and solar look very much like the attractive renewable energy sources, and probably will be for the next five to 10 years. But other programs will, and incentives and research will show other technologies that come about.
Mr. Aaron.
Okay, I'm just a little person with a little farm and 10 acres, but I'm a face of how climate change has totally affected where I live. This year, in the past five years, we've had incredible rain events that have caused my entire front yard to have water up to the foundation of our house. As a result of these incredible rain events, we've had springs that have formed in various parts of our yard, so I now continually have water in my basement, which is, you know, waterworks can come and funnel it out of my basement, but then it just goes into my yard. The whole front of our yard has turned into a wetlands, and last year, we lost 10 trees because they can't grow in water. We also lost other trees due to pest infestations, bark beetles and such. And I'm sure by the time my grandson is 10, our entire 10 acres will be buckthorn. And I have spent all last fall trying to tackle my little portion. So, climate change affects, and I know that people in my neighborhood and my neighbor over the hill is suffering similar things, where her front area has become a wetlands. And now, now I'm in whiplash, because we had a dry, you may have heard me talking earlier, we have had a dry winter and a dry spring. So I was just getting used to the creeks running through our front yard, now they're dry. Will they be dry? Can I plan for that? Can I plan for my basement to be dry? You know, I'm one of a ton of faceless people who, some people who freak out about climate change and it's not real. Well, it is real, and it has affected me, it's affected the value of our home where we've lived for 35 years. I mean, am I going to sell it to someone where it always has water in the basement? I mean, we have to do something, we have to start somewhere. Because I hope before I die, you know, my grandson will be able to not live wearing a gas mask. You know, I envision a dark, dark future for him unless we do something.
Thank you for that. And I'll just add one other thing. It's pretty clear the Biden administration has prioritized doing something on climate. So something will happen. And the organization that I belong to, Citizens Climate Lobby, is pushing this bill, because we believe it's the most pragmatic solution that will be highly effective at reducing carbon. Callan, to your question, these studies show that by 2050, we'll be carbon neutral. By 2030, they're saying there will be a 40% reduction in carbon emissions. So it's a dramatic decrease that is expected if we put in place this carbon tax. So I think from my standpoint, this board has an opportunity to get out in front of this issue and communicate to our congressional legislators that, number one, we want something done, and number two, we want it done this way, with these protections for farmers. Otherwise, the alternative is, we can just react to whatever comes and hits us in the head. And something will come.
Are you John Kerry's theory? Federal government?
Am I John Kerry?
Yeah, John Kerry, he's pushing that.
He's a climate advisor to Biden, yes. Yep.
So you a state or you federal?
We're federal, we're talking federal.
We're federal, okay.
So we want a national policy.
So when you're coming here, you say wind turbines? This county can't have wind turbines. 15 years ago, they voted it down.
Doug, I understand the, you were here, you remember that.
I was here, I voted for it, but you wouldn't, you guys won't vote for it.
We have a, we have a wind turbine ordinance, which wind turbine developers find less than tasteful.
Nobody can, nobody can.
Because it requires certain strict limits in terms of location related to houses and so forth. And that's what Doug is referring to. There's, the county does not allow wind turbines, but rather, we have an ordinance to regulate them. And I think that has discouraged the development. It's an old, it's an old discussion, it's over 10 years old, but.
We can talk about it.
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is a largely ceremonial resolution, right?
Yes.
Right.
Another one, okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
Well, it is ceremonial, but in your packet, there is a, there's a picture of other counties and other communities that have chosen to sign on with very similar types of resolutions. And I think it's notable, quite a number of communities in Wisconsin.
It's the Chair's point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What does she say?
I asked the Chair a question.
You weren't called.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We had this problem in the environment.
Okay.
But he is our speaker.
Yeah. His resolution. I'll let you continue.
I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that there are other communities that are doing something very similar. And to your point, Mr. Winters, this is about urging Congress to do something, not the state.
Any other comments? This, basically, if there's no more comments, this basically just requires a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Mr. Chair, maybe we should do a roll call vote.
Let's do a roll call, make sure we got it right.
Okay. Let's see this.
Ted, you're voting.
In favor or against the resolution?
Yeah, this is in favor of the resolution.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tulfson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
No.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Skoyen.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
No.
Douglas Winters.
No.
Sally Miller.
No.
Richard Sasha.
No.
I know, it's five, you were close, you said.
11 to 5.
Passed.
It passes.
Okay. Extension Education Committee, oops, I shat my, oh, I know, friend will find my way back, yeah.
Oh, I had my mic the whole time, you guys heard me though, right?
Yes.
It was off.
Anyway.
My mic was off. Okay. Whereas the 2020 budget for extension included funding for a cost-share water testing program and a water quality study, whereas these funds were not completely expended because of the pandemic. And whereas the programs continued to be a high priority of this county according to their strategic plan developed by the county. Whereas a balance of $9,234.50 remained in the extension budget, and those savings were returned to the general fund. Whereas it, well, they haven't yet, but, whereas it is in the best interest of Tremble County to carry over the unused balances rather than levy for them. Now be it resolved that Tremble County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize the amount of $9,234.50 be carried over to the 2021 budget to support the groundwater research project and water testing program. Be it further resolved that Tremble County Board of Supervisors hereby authorize the county clerk to transfer $5,832 from the 101.55620.999 and $3,402.50 from the 101.55621.294 to fund the 101.55621.294 and make it a non-lapsing account. Introduced by Extension Education Committee, Dan Schreiner, Kellen Nelson, Richard Sasha, Douglas Winters.
Most by, Schreiner and seconded by Winters. Okay, discussion.
I can do one more explanation.
Okay.
They had money in three different pots, and so in this final resolve thing there is, I want them to put it all in the same pot. So that's why there's some transfers going. But otherwise, there was some money that was, that would, if when we closed the books at the end of 2020, it will go to the general fund unless you carry it over.
This requires a roll call?
Yeah, it's money.
Okay.
Are you ready? No other questions, so. I wasn't ready for that. What?
I was waiting for Joyce to say, Mr. Chair, you want somebody here to speak?
Okay, okay. Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Skoyen.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters. Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tulfson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Okay. 2020 Amendment to Address Departmental Overruns.
Whereas the expenditure funds exceeding those provided in the budgeting process or by resolution of the county board is contrary to Wisconsin statutes 59.23 parentheses 2 parentheses C and 66.0607 parentheses 7. And whereas various departments have reviewed 2020 appropriations, expenditures, and possible overdrafts in their respective accounts. And whereas the following department, department, was presented to the Executive and Finance Committee showing deficits in their accounts for 2020. Now be it resolved that the 2020 budget be amended with funds transferred from the county unassigned general fund, account 101.32100, to the following account in the amount as noted in the table below. The account is 101.51415, Department Special Accounting and Auditing, amount $9,726. Introduced by Executive and Finance Committee, John Austin, George Brandt, Tim Ziegler, Richard Sasha, Chuck Wallach.
Hope to approve by Mr. Brandt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sasha. You will notice it was rational illusion drafted by Paul Seuerson, so that's the department that had the.
And it is our auditing that's throwing us, because there's getting to be more and more federal regulations. And now, we're up to actually 84 GASB, it's called Government Accounting Standard Boards Regulations. We're up to number 84 that we have to adhere to. And I can't get a hold of the budget, it just seems like new laws from the federal come, I mean, I probably will add $10,000 to the budget for next year, and that's, it just keeps growing, because we have more regulations from Fed. But, the thing that is good about this is that this was the only one. The other departments, we've had sometimes years where we've had close to $100,000 of overruns. And I think last year, it was about $16,000 last year, and I think the year before, $42,000. So I mean, we're going in the right direction, people are really watching their budgets, and budgeting correctly, I think, is what it is. This is one that I'm having a hard time keeping a handle on.
Any other questions or comments? Call a roll.
Randy Tulfson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Skoyen.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Doug Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tulfson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Skoyen.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Doug Winters.
Yes.
Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tulfson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tulfson.
Yes.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Ziegler.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
16 to 0.
Okay, item seven, item eight, appointment to town, town board representative to Environmental Land Use Committee. It's been, a member on that committee has been for six years now, I think, eight years? Has been Kathy Seglan. And from the towns association, they got a recommendation to appoint Anthony Munson, Tony Munson, is he here?
I think he's out in the hall someplace.
Anyway, do you want to, do you like to introduce himself?
Hello?
Hi, Tony.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I decided that it'd be proper for myself, at least to honor the towns association's note, and you forgot to.
about, I sure hesitate to ask this question, I think somebody should. One-third of the year, how much of the county board budget is left?
Okay.
Now that we've gone through.
Oh, you can't look at this right now. You knew I was.
I know, I, I know.
I, I can't tell you right now either because what has happened with the county board budget? We had all these expenses with Samuel's Group and with Venture Architects, their bills. We couldn't pay them with bond money. So if you look on the, on the expenses, it shows that it's in the whole four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So if I could take, I don't even know what the dollar figure is right now for Samuel's.
Where did we start out at? What did, what do we budget for the year?
Ninety-nine thousand dollars.
How much?
Ninety-nine thousand dollars.
We budgeted ninety-nine thousand.
Ninety-nine thousand.
Just on terms of this, how much have we spent on the county board?
Uh, I bet you we are pretty close to a third.
Or at least we, at least we don't have to come back and ask, take money out of the general fund to pay ourselves?
Yeah.
I really don't want to do that.
Right.
Right.
And I, I have done the, the journal entry, it didn't show on this, this sheet anyway. I've done it, so I've transferred that money over into our capital improvements fund because we have the bond money now and the bond money is covering all those expenses. So but.
So you're going to reimburse this.
You will see on next month's report, a good indication of where we are. I'm sorry, I.
I had to bring it to everyone's attention.
Because you knew when you saw that number, right.
Watching those numbers.
Well, I've been crunching the, the numbers already on the.
Yeah.
But I think, I think, you know, when I'm looking, this, this, this month, this was a high one because it's fifty-four hundred dollars on per diems. This would be considered one of our higher months. Our others are usually in that three thousand dollar range.
So anyway, you have a motion and a second?
Yep.
So call or roll.
Okay, Jeanne Nutter.
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Nimitz.
Yes.
Douglas Winters. Sally Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sasha. George Brandt.
Yes.
Beth Killian.
Yes.
Randy Tullson. Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
Yes.
Tim Seglan.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Sixteen to zero.
Okay. Item seven, item eight, appointment to town, town, uh, town board representative to environmental land use committee. It's been, or member on that committee been for six years now, I think? Eight years, has been Kathy Seglan. And from the towns association, they got a recommendation to appoint Anthony Munson, Tony Munson, is he here or?
I think he's out in the hall someplace.
Anyway. Do you want to, do you like to introduce himself or?
Hello?
Hi, Tony. Like to introduce yourself. I decided that it'd be proper for our, for myself, at least to honor the towns association's note, and you've got the letters in your packet. I think we should honor, as much as I respect Kathy and the work she's done with this committee, I just, this time I'd like to appoint Tony, but I'd like to have him introduce himself to the board so they know who he is.
Good evening, my name is Tony Munson. I'm a third-generation farmer from Earl Strum. My father was on this board back in the early nineties. He's on land conservation for twenty-two years. And we've participated in the equip programs and done some other things through land management and programs there, which has benefited our farm very well. And I guess I'm kind of like Kellen, taking over for your father. You know, it's, whether it's in the genes or if it's civil duties or what, but if the opportunity, if you're approached by it, I guess you kind of do your civic duty and do some public service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyway, would you like to do this by voice vote?
We got to have a motion to confirm.
A motion to confirm?
So.
Motion by Kellen, second to that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be voting, if we're going to have a vote, I'm going to be voting against this appointment. Since Mr. Munson was allowed to take the floor and give his background, I'd like to be allowed to read the letter that Kathy Seglan presented to the towns association. It was before the election. There was no, there was no, there was no, the usual procedure, they didn't follow because of the COVID. So each candidate was asked to present a, a short biography, and I'd like to read that to the board.
You can either do.
We got to get a second first.
Okay. She could.
Got a second by Nimitz. We also have Kat, and if she would like to talk, I have no problem with that. Would you like to talk yourself, since so?
Read this.
It's up to you. You can do it either way, I figured. You got to talk in person, so she should be able to talk in person too, so.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. I, I guess I will read the letter that I wrote to the county towns association. I am proud to have served the Tremblow County unit of the Wisconsin towns association as your representative to the county's environment and land use committee for the past four terms, that's eight years, the last two and a half terms as vice chair. I am asking for your continued support in allowing me to serve you for yet another term. During the years I've been on the committee, I have been a tireless voice for the towns on county policies and ordinances, continue, continue, conditional use permits, zoning questions, and conservation issues. Always keeping your local interests in mind and stating a town perspective when necessary. I've made it a point to get to know land management staff and meet with them after each meeting to see how they're doing, both personally and professionally, and to learn about the projects they are working on. For many years, I've helped out at the annual land judging competition and have served as a judge in the annual poster contest. In order to further my education for committee responsibilities, I've attended many zoning, planning, and conservation seminars held by UW, UW Extension, DAT cap, NRCS, and the DNR. I've attended most of the state WTA conventions, Wisconsin towns association conventions, and always attend the Wisconsin towns association regional meetings and the county unit meetings. In addition to my work on behalf of the towns association, I have been very active in the Wisconsin Land and Water Conservation Association, which was formed by our state legislature many years ago to support and educate land conservation staff, committee members, and producer-led groups throughout the state. For the last three terms, I have served on their board of directors, representing land conservation committee members from the western region of Wisconsin and have served one term on their executive committee. At the town level, I've been a supervisor on the town of Chimney Rock Board since 2013 and was appointed chairperson in 2019 and recently re-elected to the chairperson, chairperson position. I find the chair position to be very challenging but rewarding and hope to serve my town chair for many years to come. I have the experience, energy, and dedication to serve you well on the environment and land use committee. I ask that you strongly consider my assets and vote to forward my name to the county board chairman as the unit chapter choice for the towns government representative on the environment and land use committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
This is, we're, the members of our committee are in a difficult position right now because, of course, we have appreciated the, the work that Kathy has done. And everything she just read is just outstanding. She's brought an outstanding perspective, not only from the towns, towns area, but, but from her work on the regional and state level. And you'll notice that within the, within your packet, there's also a letter from the committee to, to, not necessarily to the county board, but to the county board chair saying that the committee, the EOU committee endorses Kathy as the next recommended appointment, but we also understand that the towns association is putting forth Tony's name. So, I, you know, it's, this is feeling like it's an election, but actually, we're voting on, on John's appointment. And the committee, the committee respects John, the fact that John has the authority to do this. I wanted to put the rest of that, rest of this information out there, so.
Mr. Chair. It has been brought to my attention that at least in two previous appointments to the environment and land use committee, that the chair did not forward the recommendation from the towns association. So precedent had been set not to choose their recommendation. And I just want to reiterate that Kathy's been an extremely active person in our committee, even bringing back minutes from, about climate change on the resolution that we just discussed earlier, plus bringing back lots of information from the Wisconsin Land and Water Board. I do not have anything against Mr. Munson, I do not know him whatsoever. And if he does get the approval of the board, I hope that he will be able to help assist us in, you know, doing all these contacts with the Wisconsin Land and Water. And I would request a ballot vote, please.
That would be unusual.
It would be?
It would be. A voice vote would be if someone could call for a voice vote, you can do that.
Oh.
But unusual but not, not illegal?
It wouldn't be secret, you'd have to sign it.
Okay, that's fine.
Would you? You're opposed to a voice vote?
Yes.
I mean to a roll call vote?
Oh, roll call vote.
Okay.
Roll call?
If there, yeah.
If you're all agreeable to a roll call, we'll go roll call vote.
And this is on, what are you confirming as a?
Confirming my appointment, you either confirm it or not. And if you don't confirm it, then we just go to step two.
So explain the roll call first, but I'm voting on who, or?
Voting on his appointment.
My appointment. My appointment was, my appointment was towns association's recommendation.
Well, that's what you're saying.
Right.
Okay.
But if you don't agree with it, then you vote no.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I have a concern.
Yes.
If we not to approve the towns association's recommendation, what good is it for us to request a recommendation? If that's the case, we might as well just appoint whoever we feel is our buddy. They've recommended somebody. And if we don't stand by what they recommend, you people are going right down the tubes. Thank you.
Did everybody hear his comments? Can you get closer to the microphone? Oh, you didn't even have your mic on. Oh. Get it, get it as close to as you can to it so they can hear it. Just pull the whole thing.
My comments are, if we do not follow the towns association's recommendations, why would they, why do we bother to ask them? We might just as well pick whoever we opt to pick and show total disregard to the towns. That's my comment.
Okay. Any other additional comments? No, I think we're ready. This is, this particular round is at least either you're in favor of Anthony Munson or not. So basically. Go ahead. Roll call. Roll call, I haven't heard any.
Richard Sasha.
No.
George Brandt.
No.
Beth Killian.
No.
Randy Tullson.
No.
Michelle Haynes.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Chuck Wallach.
No.
Tim Seglan.
No.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter.
This is difficult for me because Tony's my township, um, person. Yes.
Kurt Skoyan.
No.
Ron Johnson.
No.
Rick Nimitz. Doug Winters. Sally Miller.
Yes.
It's eight to eight.
Oh, that's really great.
No, we're all here, aren't we?
No, Joe's missing.
Oh, that's right. So then what?
I think it just goes, goes on for another month unless he was.
Unless you make another appointment tonight.
Well, the other appointment tonight would be Kathy, if I was making another appointment, and that's fine with me, but I think the vote would still come out the same then, if we have a vote.
We'll try it and see what happens. Can't hurt.
Okay. Is that fair, or should we hold off a month?
That is up to you.
Because if we hold off a month, then we'll have an odd number, odd number of people, so it should change the vote.
I think.
Why don't we vote now?
I think we should vote now and, and maybe it'll be different. I don't know. Or you, or wait a month. It's up to you, you decide, you're the boss. You're the boss of us.
It's your decision.
It's your choice.
Well, I, my appointee didn't win, he didn't lose either, but he did. I don't know, I, I just assumed leave my appointment for another month if that's what it takes to get a different vote.
And that's up to you, because you're the one in charge of appointing, so.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if we postpone for another month, will Mrs. Seglan remain on the committee for one more month?
At least for one more month.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, now that wouldn't go so well, but.
We're on to the next, huh?
Appointment for a citizen member to Parks Tourism and Economic Development committee. And the citizen member recommended by the committee from, was Bus, Bus Sorgy, who's already on the committee and I've listened to a few of their parks committee meetings, and he does a very good job, very concerned citizen, so I would like to reappoint Bus to succeed himself and looking for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Wallach, seconded by Jeanne. Any other comments? Not?
Oh.
This could just do.
What?
Did I hear a no?
I, no, I don't have any comments.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay. This should, this should be able to just go with a voice vote. All those in favor of Bus Sorgy? All in post in favor of Bus Sorgy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You got to wait for them, okay. They both said yes to it.
Yeah, hearing none, not carried. C, appointment of citizen members to Tremble County Board of Adjustments to succeed Nancy Horton and James W. Shortz, and that's the recommendation, were those two, right?
Yeah.
So. Move for their approval, is there a second to my appointment?
Was there a motion?
Not yet, he.
I'll make a motion to approve those two.
I, I will move to.
There you go.
Okay.
You, you're appointing.
Okay. Okay.
George.
Okay, approve the appointment, yeah.
And who?
Killian will second.
Got to get to where I'm supposed to be in my book here.
Okay.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That's correct. Appointment of Tremble County Housing Authority to succeed Duane Frederick. And the recommendation is Duane Frederick.
Scott Brown.
Oh, Scott Brown, there he is, Scott Brown. Scott Brown, and this is from the, uh, Executive Director of Housing Authority. Recommend Scott Brown to replace Duane Fredericks, who resigned. So my appointment will be Scott Brown. Is there a, most accept?
I'll second.
Doug?
Most of you already did.
Most by Winters, seconded by.
Nutter?
Nutter or Kellen?
No, he was, he was.
Okay.
Well, what now? Who did you get?
Winters Nelson.
Winters Nelson, okay. Winters Nelson, okay. Voice vote, hopefully.
We got to ask for it.
Yeah. All those in favor of the appointment of Duane Frederick? Oh, Scott Brown, I mean, Scott Brown.
Scott Brown, Scott Brown.
Say it one more time so they do it unison.
Okay, all those in favor of Scott Brown signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, it's carried. This is kind of an unusual one here. Dear Tremble County Board, we are in a unique situation. Our library board was approved by the city council a couple of weeks ago, and the problem is we have one too many people from Tremble County. And now we need one more board member from the city. We would like you to appoint from the county and we'd like to keep her. This person, Sher Lemke, and we feel she should, we have an asset to our board. They want to keep her because they've got one too many members, but. So they're asking us to approve Sher Lemke for, this would be on a, this would not be on a regular basis. There's a single situation where they just goofed up on their appointments, so.
Can I clarify that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, good.
I don't know how this works.
Well, what, what happens is the county has, has the authority to appoint a member to every municipal library board. A municipal library board can, has so many members by statute, and only one of them can be from outside of the city limits or the village limits. It happens that Rob Re, the mayor of Arcadia appointed two people from outside the city limits, people who were very active within the, the library. The library director, Jennifer Losinski, very much wants to keep Sher Lemke on. She's a real asset to the, the library board and, and she's asking us to basically invoke the county's ability to appoint a member to the library board. So that, that's what the request is about. How many people will now be on the library board? I think they're up to six, just make six. Could be an even though. Well. I mean, I'm not. I don't, I, actually, I don't know for sure. I, I was called with this issue and passed it on to John, I didn't get any numbers for sure.
Yeah, actually, you got called on it too, didn't you?
Yep, and I, I went to Rick and.
So basically, it's an appointment, just temporary, it shouldn't be just a single situation, it shouldn't happen again because they'll be able to count to six or seven or whatever they normally count to. So. I'm appointing Sher Lemke.
I would move to approve the appointment.
Killian will second.
Motion by Brandt, seconded by Killian.[1757.84] All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I will let them know tomorrow.
Appointment to ADRC Advisory Council.
Deb is out there someplace?
No, she had to leave.
Oh, does she have something, because I have no name.
Anyway, the, well, she does have a name here. Sorgy cannot stay for this election, she's, anyway, the, the.
John, your chairman?
Yes.
I didn't hear anybody say aye on that one. That last vote for.
They all did.
They all did.
Yep.
You missed, I had your sound off. Okay, this is, uh, this is from the Human Resource Department, I am ready to ask that Alan Robertson from Blair, Wisconsin be appointed by the county board chair to request confirmation by the county board as the new member of the ADRC Advisory Council replacing retiring member. He was recommended by human services, uh, human service board for your consideration. There are two additional vacancies remaining in ADRC board, but she would like to take the next couple of months to figure those out, but right now she wants to appoint Alan Robertson who at one time was our corporate counsel, was he?
No, he was, he was our county judge.
County judge, okay.
Referring to him as judge.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve Alan Robertson. Motion by Nutter. Seconded by Skoyan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's Carrie. Did you hear it that time, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, committee reports.
No, you got one more.
One more? Oh, yeah, appoint county board member to local emergency planning committee, and that's my job to appoint somebody because there's supposed to be two board members, and Dan can explain this better than I can, but, so I'm gonna look at for, after he explains that, I'm looking for a volunteer from this group to serve on this committee because Sally Miller used to, but resigned. So anyway, would you want to explain that, what we're looking for?
The, um, local emergency planning committee technically is supposed to meet quarterly. Because of COVID, we've been meeting more regularly and, um, probably till the end of the year, we'll be meeting bimonthly. The committee basically oversees, um, the locations of hazardous materials in the county, works closely with the county's emergency management director, Dustin Stevens, and, um, helps with, um, planning, um, trying to keep abreast of changes at the federal and state levels when it comes to emergency management and, uh, whole bunch of other fun stuff.
Okay, that kind of gives you an idea what it is, I'm looking basically for a volunteer, I don't want to stick, I'm looking for a volunteer from this, a volunteer from some board member here to do this.
When does the committee meet usually, time of day? Um, we're gonna try five o'clock, we were meeting at three o'clock in the afternoon and often had difficulty, um, coming up with a quorum.
What day is it?
Mr. Johnson, are you volunteering? All right. I was afraid everybody's gonna jump at once, but, so, I'm putting Mr. Johnson's name in for confirmation.
The next meeting is, uh, July fourteenth, you'll, you'll get noticed, so.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Johnson.
I will second.
Our wonderful volunteer.
Motion, Killian, seconded by Miss Nutter.
We should bring.
What the hell was that?
Sid and Monroe.
All of those from.
I, I knew that.
Fell out of my pocket. All those in favor, Mr. Johnson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, Carrie. Now, committee report.
Anybody in this room knows someone who would love to participate in the ADRC, contact Deb Sukala or me.
Okay.
It's critical that we get two more members.
Are we talking citizen members?
Either that or old. No. Okay, committee reports, executive and finance committee, budget.
Well, you should have, uh, sales tax came in your packet and the general fund update, and on your table should have had the update of the expenditures, which will look a little better next month on the county board anyway. I knew where Tim was coming from on that, so. So if you got any questions, let me know.
Okay, COVID nineteen committee update, is there something from the COVID, oh, Sally?
It's that lady there.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, so, the COVID committee, we, as you know, um, last Friday voted to, um, after reviewing most recent data, best practices, um, best information out there, um, voted to, um, shift the mask mandate for use within county facilities, um, to be, uh, masks encouraged but optional. Um, and I see the people have embraced that, so, um, we have, um, we continue to look at the, um, situation as it changes and, um, continue to, um, look at policies and such. Right now, I think the, the challenge facing, um, the committee is the, um, is we start looking at, um, some of the, um, benefit-related policies, which, um, you know, we're advancing recommendations to personal bargaining, um, the full board and such, but, um, yes, the, the, the mask change was, was a very exciting thing because it showed that we were definitely moving in the right direction in this county in terms of our numbers.
Okay. Any questions at all for the committee, for Sally? Okay, that, thank you, Sally. Couple of announcements I'd like to make, personnel bargaining is scheduled for, uh, two thirty instead of one thirty, that says on your agenda that you'll, if you haven't got it already. So, personnel bargaining says on the schedule is one thirty, but it's actually gonna be a two thirty. And let's see. Yeah.
Really?
It is. Yeah, it's gonna be a two thirty.
And I think, I think the agenda already went out and it says one thirty, but there was some talk.
Yep, I already emailed Krista to let her know that she needs to amend the agenda for the time, I don't think she was present for the time when that time was set.
Yeah. So anyway, it's gonna be a two thirty, and the other thing is, uh, building oversight committee scheduled this nineteenth now for, at nine thirty AM? It's on the nineteenth.
Wednesday.
Wednesday the nineteenth.
Nine thirty.
At nine thirty AM. And so, uh, then in our next regular board meeting, oh, I called a special meeting, June fourteenth due to the, the vote from law enforcement committee to have a bigger, a bigger, uh, what was the word?
Venue.
A, a bigger venue discussing this sanctuary county thing, so, I called the high, Whittle High School and we have the high school gym scheduled for June fourteenth, no charge to the county whatsoever, so, anyway, Ms. Nutter.
I don't, I just want to make a comment, I don't think I've ever been involved in an issue in the county where we've had three public hearings, um, so, I'm just putting that out there, there's already been two public hearings on this issue.
I was kind of hoping it would have got settled at the last meeting, uh, law enforcement, it didn't happen, and then this motion came from law enforcement to have a, a bigger venue and, and just, that's all we talked about, no other thing, so that's why we came up with the, June fourteenth. And basically, I called that myself, June fourteenth at the high school.
So will this.
That's the thing that happens to happen, if you want to vote not to this, it's fine with me too.
Right, I mean, but will this change our process that we could have multiple public hearings on one issue?
That's a good question, I don't know.
I mean, we never had three public hearings on a sand mine, in my experience.
It's a good question, the other, the other alternative that I was thinking, it's kind of been brought up by other people who, that it could just be postponed and put it on a referendum next spring for them.
Mr. Chair, I, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm confused, um, I, I, um, it, it's, it's being proposed by the, um, associated clubs, it's, it's gone through two committees, neither of whom are recommending it to the board, um, if.
Well, actually, it came to the board first, didn't it?
No.
It came to exec finance and, and we, I feel bad about this now, kicked it to law enforcement, thinking it was a law enforcement in a sense, the sheriff was there to speak to it. And it, that being the case, I'm not, I'm not sure, I, I do not see the purpose for a, a meeting, a public hearing, it's not, um, and as Supervisor Nutter said, it's, we don't do that. I mean, we don't, we don't ask, we don't allow people.
I'm kind of in agreement with it, and to me, the whole purpose of the, it's just basically sending a letter to your congressman that doesn't really have any teeth to this whole.
Well, well, in a, in a sense, in a sense, it does, but at the same time, it's, it's a matter of our policy as a county, I certainly understand there are people who are concerned across the spectrum related to this, there's been letters and so forth and signs and, and all that, but I'm not sure what we're, what we would be meeting for, because, uh, who's recommending this to the county board? Is it, is it coming from a committee? What, what, what possible action could we do? Is it just to sit and listen? I mean, what, I, I guess I would ask Rick to, to weigh in on this, to see if, you know, what are we, what, why would we do this meeting if we've heard, um, the issue, I mean, if there's been public input related to the issue?
John, could I, before you.
Yes. I just do.
George, did you read your emails?
I'm all right, I'm fine.
George, I have already protested and challenged this.
Yeah, I know, so I'm asking.
We've got a sound.
And suggest, is again, as a way out, it suggested that, that the chairman, the chairman has the prerogative to call a special meeting, period. But I did suggest that since we have already heard so much testimony and since the, the most recent testimony repeats the previous testimony, which repeats the first testimony, um, that it would be more appropriate if we just added it to the next, uh, meeting agenda and that we did not give it such a wide scope, that we add, add the item to the next, uh, regular board meeting agenda, and it would be really, still be the chairman's prerogative whether or not to hold public, uh, comment at that time. But, 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 well, the two committees have heard public comment, one, one of those committees have heard public comment twice, but this still leaves other members of the board who may, may not be aware of the, of the, um, the pros and the cons of the both sides of the situation.
So, so the, but the question, the question is, how, how does this relate to what our responsibility to this resolution is? If this is the case, it is entirely possible for any member of this body, as an, as a county board supervisor, to bring it as a resolution to the county board, and no county board supervisor has done that, and no county committee has done that. I, this, it's, 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 it's about, um, process and county board rules, for me, at this time, um, I've been in the gym and, uh, in, in Blair when there was a contentious issue, it ain't what you would call a friendly room, and.
This is Whitehall, but we've been.
I thought it was, didn't you say Blair?
No, Whitehall.
Oh, it's Whitehall. Oh, actually, that might be, how about the auditorium?
It's on the bottom of your agenda.
I really don't know if it'd be any better than Whitehall.
So, but.
Ms. Miller, did you have a comment? Ms. Miller, did you have a comment?
I am the person that made the motion to advance to the full board without taking a vote at the law enforcement committee, I also am uncertain why it ended up on any committee agenda, but I certainly was not at all, um, in the mindset to vote on such a contentious issue with a room full of people who were sitting at the tables, sitting around us as committee members. It was unfair to send this to a committee of five people and expect them to bear the weight of that decision. And then everybody else goes, oh, I, I didn't vote on it, I'm not on that committee. So yes, I'm the one that, that advanced it to the full board, let's all have fun with it.
Is there, is there a way we can just postpone this to the next meeting and then vote on it then? Somebody make a motion here and we just cancel out this June fourteen?
And are you talking about putting the resolution on the next regular county board meeting and then have the board vote on that? Don't need to vote on it tonight, um, it can be placed on the next.
It's not on the agenda for tonight, so we'd vote on it at the next board meeting, but then I can cancel the June fourteen.
That, that would be an option.
Can somebody make that a motion legally, because?
Not, not tonight, I wouldn't make that, make the motion tonight. The only thing I would just, I know Supervisor Miller was the one that initially made the motion to refer to the county board for the, and she put some parameters on it, now ultimately, it goes to you to decide what, how you want to handle that, so if you decide to just put it on there without the public comment portion at the next regular board meeting, you certainly can do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Again, I, this is probably three or four, but, um, that would give us an opportunity to discuss it, we've been, as the committee was, um, last week, in, in, this board has been in position, as has the school board in Galesville, um, to discover how difficult it is to, to function with people screaming in the background uncontrollably and, and not listening to requests to be, um, constrained. It's almost impossible to do what it is we're supposed to do, which is to discern, discuss, and, and make decisions, and, um, a, a county board meeting without public comment, limited, I mean, we are limited, obviously, by, um, our seating and the understanding that any, anybody who's there is there to observe and not to participate unless called upon by the chair. I think that would make it easier for the, the county board to do what it is we're supposed to do.
Okay. Ms. Nutter?
And I would echo what George is saying, because I don't, I think, um, having a third, I know that there are going to be people who are gonna be angry about this decision, but I, you know, because they're counting on having a third public hearing. But I just, I just don't think we need to start a precedent of having three, you don't like what happens, okay, we'll have another public hearing, you didn't like that meeting, we'll have another public hearing. It's, it's not, in my mind, ever been done since I've been actively involved in, in county issues, um, so if you make the decision, because you're the chair, to just have a vote on it and we, you know, discuss it.
I think we've probably.
I think it becomes very uncomfortable to have another public hearing, I don't want to have another public hearing like we had in December when it wasn't really set up for a public hearing.
Ms. Killian?
Yes, um, I have had, um, a few phone calls and, um, emails on, phone calls on both sides, emails on both sides already coming from, um, you know, constituents out in Tremplaw County. And, you know, what we read in the paper, so I'm a little bit aware of, um, you know, there's the situation, but I myself cannot go through another mask mandate meeting like we had in December. So, I would like to see this just brought as a regular, um, meeting, agenda item, and since public has already commented at two different meetings, be a board discussion and not have any, uh, public hearing at the county board meeting, thank you.
Sounds fine, Mr. Chair.
I would have to assume if we do that, which I, it was fine, but there is gonna be a large portion of public or several people here, I have to assume, right? Wouldn't you think that, and how does that work out?
Well, they really don't get to comment at a regular board meeting unless we, we just opened it up for that mask mandate last time, and that's kind of why we're picking a separate venue if something existed, come up, but.
Right, but I think he's saying that they'll still show up regardless.
They're gonna be.
I'm sure there'll be some people here regardless. Yes, Mr. Skoyan.
One more comment, John?
Yeah, I got Mr. Skoyan behind me first.
I'm going back to the sand mine days, oop.
It's going to make Mr. Skoyan behind you.
No, he called on Kurt Skoyan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'd just like to know what, just what are we talking about, some of us board members are in the dark here, we don't.
Oh, it's about that sanctuary county.
Yeah, okay, but you were talking a mask mandate.
Oh, she said she didn't want to go through another.
Well, that's why I don't know what you're talking about when somebody says that, I don't know if you're talking about.
Well, when we had the mask mandate deal and the mask people are coming up here.
Well, see, we don't, some of us probably don't know anything about the sanctuary meetings that have been going on either, because we don't get any information. So, I mean, when you're talking.
Yeah.
We didn't actually have public com, like, we didn't have public hearings, we had public comment sections, which are in most of our committee meetings, they just were allowed to go on for hours. And, again, going back to what happened in December, we don't usually allow the public to comment during our full board meetings. My motion was trying to find a way that we would not have a meeting that extended after midnight, um, with a public comment hearing that might go two or three hours. We, we do, you know, we, we definitely have people who want to weigh in on it, I am not emotionally attached to having a public comment period, I, I, I think they're reaching out to us quite effectively via phone, via email, via letter, sometimes they show up at our houses, so, um, I, you know, I, I am. So, I, you know, I, I am, I'm just concerned that we are setting the precedence, cherry-picking what issues we allow to be brought forward, as ceremonial issues, or what resolutions, or what we bring forward is, oh, we're gonna allow this particular topic to have public comment in the full board meeting, but we're not gonna that. So, whatever we decide to do, it's, it needs to be within policy, it needs to be what our practices are, and we can't be cherry-picking preferential treatment to one issue or the other. I, I'm, you know, this is my resolution, or my motion was designed to, if we're going to be allowing public comment, I didn't want it during a full board meeting. I didn't want to have a repeat of what happened in December, so I figured if, just a standalone meeting, then if people want there to be public comment, then, then we can, but, one way or the other, that, you know, we need to, we need to decide what our policies are gonna be.
Okay.
John?
Mr. Wallach?
One thing, George said there was no teeth to it, but when they originally brought it to exec finance, their intent was to have our law enforcement not enforce that in Tremplow County.
That is still the intent.
Yes, so there is some teeth to this. We would be instructing our police force not, if, if this law does pass, to not enforce it in Tremplow County. Is that the way that you heard it, too, the first time?
Yes, well, I've heard it, I've heard it three times.
So there is, there actually is some teeth to this.
And it's not just law enforcement who ignore whatever state and federal laws are regarding gun safety or anything, it's, it's all county officials, so it's you, me, Kurt, all of us.
But the police officers are the one that would actually end up doing it.
And we would, we would be asked not to fund law enforcement for enforcing such laws, so we are all party to the crime.
The way it was explained to us, that our...
We're debating issues.
I was gonna say, I think we're going too far on that.
I am, yeah.
Chair, I think we are, yeah, open meeting here, this wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda.
There was a discussion, legit discussion about the meeting or not, because I was listing other items, so that's what John had brought up originally.
I'll take some more.
One other thing maybe, and I don't know if that's gonna make any point, is, it wouldn't be in the Whitehall High School gym, it would be in the auditorium.
Right, in the auditorium.
So, that, that makes a difference where it is, you know, it, it does say auditorium, which would be a lot more quiet than people screaming and shouting in a gymnasium.
Right. And, anyway.
John, once more?
Yes.
Ron, did you want to talk? I saw Ron's hand.
Well, I did. I just wanted to bring up that at the law enforcement meeting, Sally made the motion, I seconded it, because I felt that's where it should go, to the full county board. And for us to say no wouldn't have been fair to either side. I, I don't think five different districts from the county should be deciding for the whole county. So that's why we made the motion to bring it to the full county board.
Okay. Mr. Ziegler?
Yeah, and, 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 Ron, I recognize that, I did make the suggestion at the meeting that the chairman could bring it before the board. No supervisor has brought this forward, it has no backing from any supervisor. The chairman can bring it forward, but I think the best way to, I would suggest the best way to set, to sort of satisfy all these various concerns would be to put it on the, the agenda of a regular meeting, not allow, and not allow public comment. We could, the board can still debate it, the, as far Kurt mentioned, not hearing about it, I, I don't know, I've been getting, I have now, I mean, keeping, running track, I got three more emails today, from people, I got three more emails today. So the running count, I'm, I'm assuming that they're going to all, it's that tab that you hit, it goes to all the supervisors. So I have had now about thirty-seven emails on this. So, I mean, I've heard from a lot of people, and, but this has been going on for, for two months. But if, if, if we held it, put it as an agenda item at the, at the full board, then that would satisfy Ron's concern that the full board hears it, that was also Sally's concern. If we did not allow public comment, we would eliminate the concerns that Beth and, and Jeannie and I, I also have about having a room packed with people occasionally hostile. It got much more hostile last time, at the last meeting than it was at the first meeting. Every, every meeting, the hostility and the anger has, has increased. So I, I really don't, I don't think that the board needs to go through that, that's George's concern. That is not how we're supposed to function.
So you're suggesting just...
Regular board, and gen, you put it on the agenda at a regular board meeting, don't allow public comment.
So who's gonna present it then? Because somebody has to present their resolution to county board.
John can do that.
I can do that.
I mean, just read it, and then they can start discussing it really.
Okay, so then, basically, the June fourteenth is canceled.
That's when you're gonna do that, or...
No. Well, no, we're gonna do the regular board meeting on the, what's the twenty-first?
June twenty-first.
Yeah, June twenty-first will be the regular board meeting, no meeting on the fourteenth.
No meeting on the fourteenth?
Is that okay with you, Kathy? I mean, Sally, is that okay with you?
And we'd save $2,000. That's what a special meeting costs.
You're, you're on mute.
Mike, no, I'm not on, I'm not on mute, I'm choosing my words carefully, I'm trying to do that more. I, I think, I heard somebody laugh, that's not funny. My only concern is that the committee did vote on a specific, that we would have the, the meeting, that we would do public comment, and all of that. I don't know how that works in terms of the motion, that, that's probably a Rick question. Personally, I'm fine with what you guys are talking about, but I don't know what that means for the motion that the committee voted on, so I'm looking for guys on that.
I don't at the moment, other than, this is probably beyond the scope of what's on our agenda, so it's something that I can bring up with, and then have some discussion with.
I think we might have some more discussion over the week, but it's just a pending meeting at this point, then.
I don't know if there's an immediate need to deal with this topic, but I don't see any, you know, as I said earlier, I've gotten phone calls, and I've gotten emails, I, I don't know if we have to do this right away, could we decide at the next board meeting what to do?
Yeah.
You know, as postponing it, but, you know, I, I understand what Sally's saying about having, you know, pub, going ahead with public comments, but I don't see the urgency that we have to do it right now. So, whatever you decide.
Well, I hope you people call me in the, this week, or email me one way or another what your thoughts are, and I'll make a decision from what I hear from all the board members.
I'll tell you Thursday.
Okay, anyway, I don't have anything else, I'm looking for instruction number ten, instruct the clerk to pay mileage, somebody make a motion, instruct, motion by Mr. Johnson, the second, Mr. Scoy.
Just one question, before we vote, have we already approved a special meeting? Didn't we?
Oh, we didn't, didn't we?
We don't have to, Jack, to set a... No, no, I'm talking about, we had the special meeting, and we didn't get paid after that one.
We're gonna get paid for two of them.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking, is there any action, is there any...
You passed a motion, you did instruct the clerk to pay mileage per diem for the April twenty-ninth meeting, but I told you at that meeting, you're not getting paid until you okay this one, and you get them both on the same check.
Okay, that's what I was just clarifying.
There. You can call a roll. Motion, you got the motion?
I, I, I think, was it Ron made the motion?
Ron, I, Kurt, second.
Is that what you got? Oh, good. I'm glad she's here, 'cause she catches that, and I'm missing it. Okay, and guess who's first? Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Rick Nimitz?
Yes.
Douglas Winters? Sally Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sasha?
Yes.
George Brand?
Yes.
Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tulffson?
Yes.
Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
John Lawson?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Ziegler?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Kellen Nelson?
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Scoy?
Yes.
Sixteen to zero. You're gonna get paid.
Okay.
Where are we?
We can resign, uh, during this meeting yet.
Until...
Until, I don't know.
June twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
June twenty-first, 'cause you canceled the...
Or, he's still taking under advisement.
Oh, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Still taking this one under advisement.
The next meeting is to be, be determined.
Next meeting to be determined, by your input. So make sure you email me, or call me, or whatever, this week. Yeah, I want to hear what the...